Councilors, please come to order. Clerk will call the row.
Hi.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Conliberty?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Reposo?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and that deemed acknowledged and permissible. Entertained the motion to open the public hearing?
Motion over the public hearing.
Motion to open has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Section 6-4A of the City Charter that a public hearing will be held by the City Council on Tuesday, June 1st, 2023, at 5:45 PM in the council chambers in government center. To hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard, on the fiscal year 2024 budget, proposed operating budget is available for the public's inspection at the Four Rivers Public Library on the main branch, and the office of the city clerk, or on the City of Four Rivers website at www.fourrivermass.org. Are there any proponents to this public meeting? Any proponents can come down, please. We'll see if the technicians can come out here and put the TVs on. Actually, I'm wrong. Okay.
Good evening.
It's good to be with you tonight. So I'm going to start with a very brief kind of big picture. Seth, I know, I know we all know who we are, but can we just give our names, please? Of course. I'm sorry, Mr. President, I appreciate the reminder. That's quite all right. Some people might be watching for the first time. I am Seth Aiken, the city administrator.
Bridget Alman, the director of financial services.
So we have a brief presentation for you this evening. I'm going to start with kind of a very brief, big-picture overview, and I think you have the handouts as well, reflecting what's going to be on the screens above. So as we consider this budget, as well as look beyond FY '24, we're cognizant of three major issues, which is that there is uncertainty regarding cannabis revenue. As you know, in the fall, the governor signed a change to the cannabis statute, which, at least at first glance, seemed to take away the community impact, 3%. In fact, that's not really what is going to happen. There is the opportunity to justify up to 3%, but there's rules forthcoming. So really, it has thrown that entire piece of what we had been budgeting for or expecting into some level of uncertainty, but we hear that new rules are forthcoming, and we're going to be working hard to make sure that we can justify as much as we can. But for now, we're anticipating that as uncertainty with the opportunity to get up to the 3%. In addition to that uncertainty regarding the cost of building the new Diamond, obviously construction costs all over are increasing. We are working with the Diamond Building Committee to understand what those costs are going to be and when we're going to begin incurring them. And then finally, relative to the last two years, where we had significant new growth as a result of a number of different things, a revow as well as a bunch of additional tax revenue from National Grid, this year is going to be relatively flat. And so anticipating those three things, we're looking at 2000 FY '25 as a fiscal year where we anticipate actually some significant increases in revenue and new growth. So in addition to at least 1,000 new housing units that would be expected to come online in FY '25, 500 of those are in the actual planning and permitting stages. The other 500 are contemplated by different developers, but there is a tremendous amount of reason to be hopeful with regard to that development. And then on top of that, the combination of TIF reductions on Amazon and other TIF recipients, which would increase revenue to the city by approximately $700,000. Use of the entire DIRFey debt exclusion for the very first time for three years, it's either not been assessed against the taxpayer or just a portion of it, and you'll hear more about that from CFO Alman. And then what we expect to be increased revenue associated with the MBTA service, as well as Route 79 development, resulting in additional tax base and revenue from businesses and other development projects that should result from those two things. And then, of course, the completion of the 10-year revow in FY '24 will begin to pay dividends in '25, where we'll likely see revenue from property that may not have been captured prior to that. In addition, the administration proposes to be proactive about the fact that '24 is sort of a bridge year, and you're going to hear that term a couple times tonight, by using ARPA funds for capital expenses. So you're not going to see the capital expenses in the budget. We've talked a lot about how we're trying to use those ARPA funds to pay for things that are going to be, have a useful, long life of multiple years. And then using ARPA revenue replacement monies in the budget in order to offset costs that would ordinarily burden the budget, which has the end result of bolstering the stabilization fund and OPEB fund balances for the city by the time we're done with the fiscal year. And then finally, what you're going to see tonight is a conservative balanced budget that came from strategic meetings with department heads, looking at needs, looking at a plan, looking at ways to maintain and take care of our assets so that they last. This has been something that this council has encouraged us to do more of, and I think when you hear from different department heads over the next several nights, you're going to hear that that is something that we've taken very, very seriously. And with that, I'll turn it over to CFO Alman. Do we need to start asking questions? Counselor, seat seven, Counsel Reposo?
Thank you. Just two quick questions, Mr. City Administrator. Please. I think it was the echo.
Just separate the microphones at the table.
It's the UFO.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Regarding the cannabis revenue, do we expect further establishments being opened in the next budget cycle here?
So you'll hear more about the seven total that we expect to have fully operational in FY '24.
Seven.
When we began budgeting, a lot of it was projections based upon what we thought was going to come online but hadn't yet, because a lot of that, as you know, the CCC controls a lot of that licensing. It's really out of the city's hands. So we believe in FY '24, we're going to see the revenue from seven established cannabis businesses, and also in FY '24, we're going to get much better guidance as to how we not only benefit from the 3% excise tax, which is unchanged, but also how we can justify essentially taking back some percentage of that community fee that was essentially removed with more to follow by the governor back in the fall.
Got it. And the second question regarding the Diamond construction costs, is the project right now still on schedule on Diamond's side, as far as when we're expected to see that hit?
So...
Or has it been pushed out a little bit because of costs and what have you?
I can't speak to that specifically. I know that, you know, there's a lot of value engineering going on, trying to make sure that they're getting the most building that they can for the money that they have. I do know that you're going to see momentarily that we have budgeted the first interest payment on some of the, or initial borrowed money for Diamond that was used for design costs and other things. Next year, you're going to see, what, approximately $2.5 million in costs associated with Diamond?
$2.6 million.
$2.6 million in costs. And then we expect in the next fiscal year, so FY '26, is probably when we will see the full cost of Diamond, which at this point, the working number sounds like it's about $6.6 million a year, but I think there is some question as to where it actually ends up. Obviously, construction costs are always increasing. Buildings of that size in that complexity are hard to pin down, but I know they're working hard to do that.
Okay. And then regarding Diamond and the change in that heating system that was discussed recently, how is that changing the numbers if we know that yet?
I don't know that.
Okay. When do you think we will know or have an estimate of what that looks like now that's going to impact us?
So I have only heard reports that they have pivoted away from geothermal to another more conventional system. I don't know how far along they are in making that pivot to actually put a number with it. As soon as we know, I will do my best to let the council know whether there's a meeting or through the president, however, we can do it the quickest, so you have the most up-to-date information.
Well, we can assume that probably won't affect until the following year when we actually start making some principal payments on that.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat two, Counselor Dion?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I believe you stated 2.6 for Diamond? Is that what you said?
In FY '25.
In '25, 2.6. And the 3% impact fee represents what dollar amount?
So, hard to say. Do you have an estimate on that?
So, we're estimating that to be...
Please, we can get to the microphone.
We're estimating that to be well over $3 to $4 million.
So we'll say 3.5? Would that be a fair?
Yeah.
For discussion purposes?
Yeah.
Okay, so 3.5. Okay. So, in this year's budget, there's $4.5 million in ARPA funding being used because of the cannabis issue, correct? As part of the...
As part of it, sure.
Part of it.
Yeah, part of it is the DIRFey debt exclusion, so we're using that to offset the impact on the taxpayer by about $2.5 million.
Okay, so if the cannabis, we're not able to regain that, and Diamond comes on, that's a $6.1 million deficit that we're looking at, and we can't even pay $4.5 million this year without ARPA funding, so to me, we're looking at a potentially huge problem in that budget.
I wouldn't, respectfully, I wouldn't agree, and here's why. The $4.5 million doesn't reflect a deficit. The $4.5 million reflects using ARPA revenue replacement to offset certain costs, so that at the end of the year, we're able to increase stabilization funds, trying to anticipate what might happen in '25 with Diamond and with other costs, and acknowledging that we really don't know how the cannabis question is going to work itself out. In addition to that, though, what we see as additional revenue in '25 is more than $6 million additional from, so we're expecting probably new growth of around $2 million in FY '24. It was significantly more than that last year, so this is more coming back to earth. We expect some new growth in '25, but also because of the use of the entire DIRFey debt exclusion, because of additional housing units coming on, TIF reduction by about $700,000, we're looking at more than $6 million in increased revenue in '25 that I think is going to offset some of that. Not to say we don't need a plan, especially for Diamond. I think that once we get through this budget, it's going to be critically important for the administration in this council to begin working together to figure out exactly what this looks like, to get the most up-to-date information, and to make a plan for how we're going to pay for it, because it's important.
It certainly is.
You know, we need a new Diamond, it's a lot of money, and we need to make sure we balance both factors.
And we're also going to have the full boat for DIRFey as well that's going to be added on.
Well, that's using the debt exclusion, so we're actually going to realize the benefit of the full debt exclusion.
Okay. Now, the only other thing I have a question on for now is, on the FY '25 budget, you're looking at increased revenue from the 79 development. I'm a little confused on that, because Tuesday night, they stated that construction won't even be completed for at least two or three years. So how do we benefit from the development when it's not even completed yet?
So conservatively speaking, I think you're going to see some initial development happening around 79, around portions that are completed. The entire project, you're right, not completed for several years. But as they complete portions of that project, I think you're going to see opportunities open up. There's some question as to how quickly, as we heard the other night, how quickly that land can, will be turned over, but we're speculating that because of the train beginning at the end of this year, there is going to be increased revenue just around real estate value. And in addition to that, as they complete portions of 79, there's going to be the opportunity for that growth as well. It's speculative at this point, but I think we can count on that towards the end of FY ' '25.
Yeah, because the master plan involving all those parcels of land hasn't even begun. I don't know when that master plan will be concluded or when it will be determined who's going to handle choosing who the prospective developers will be of each parcel. So I feel like that's, I feel like that's not even in the FY '25 budget at this point. I could be wrong. I just, I just don't see it as a viable revenue source for FY '25 at this point. With that, I yield for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat six, Counselor Vice President, Carrera?
Just two quick questions. How much money do we have in each of the ARPA funds?
We have, so the county funds, I don't know offhand. I believe that the city ARPA funds is about $32 million. That includes revenue replacement.
Mrs. Alman, do you happen to know Bristol County?
I don't know the Bristol County balance.
I know Attorney Humm handles that, so, okay, those are the ones I wanted to know. And Diamond Project so far is six months behind because of all the geothermal discussion that was had, and now having to, I guess with the geothermal, they were going to get $6 million in a rebate. Without geothermal, they won't get that, but I think the other way may be less expensive, so they're tweaking how they're doing things. So I do know, I have heard that, that that's going to be a little bit delayed, but I think that the DEP or EPA, they thought geothermal was good, but DEP has lots of different groups, and some groups will push for this and other groups will push for that, and I think if we're concerned with possible water contamination, we need to go another route. But I'd like to know more about it, because I think you're going to see people using it within their homes through new construction being built. There may be something because of rebate facts that come in. That's the only question I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just have a quick question. How much are we looking at certifying free cash? How much are we asking them to certify?
How much do we have remaining of free cash that certify?
No, how much are we asking them to certify for free cash?
We won't, we don't, we don't even start that process till the end of the summer, beginning of the fall. But we, you know, I mean, I kind of talk about that if I go a little bit further and do the presentation. We've been averaging just over $3 million for the last five years, so we would expect, you know, to be looking at something similar to that.
All right. Thank you. Counselor, seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just along the same lines as my colleagues, though, so the potential for 1,000 new housing units, obviously this value, what are we expecting for new growth?
I apologize, I missed the middle of the question.
What are we expecting for new growth for the new housing units?
So...
Because we're already, we're already being taxed on, well, those, I guess those properties are already being taxed, right? There's a lot of renovations and conversions to apartments, right? So...
So the 1,000-plus that I'm talking about would not be in the ones that are in the building phase. So I went from what's currently in permitting phase to plans that have been discussed with different entities in the city, whether it's, you know, folks in site plan review and the engineer, you know, initial inquiries, or Mr. Fiala. So at this point, none of the 1,000 that I'm talking about are part of what we're being, we're being taxed on.
So what do, I guess what are we anticipating for? Because we're talking about some offsets to the 4.5 in ARPA, right? So it's the potential for 1,000, so what are you estimating, though, for new growth? Like, that's going to bring in to new growth, because we're averaging anywhere from $2 to $3 million in new growth, so I would, I would anticipate that that would be in, above and beyond what we are seeing, right?
So we, you don't answer the question?
Yeah.
So we expect the new growth because of, we know of the TIFs that are coming up, so we know that's going to be about another $700,000 in new growth. So I, right now, it looks like we would project about $2.7 million in new growth in fiscal '25.
Did you say 7 million?
2.7.
2.7.
And that's, that's very conservative. I mean, that's kind of the, the average plus what we know the TIFs are. I think we're still, I think we're still hesitant to actually put a new growth number on the housing starts, because the sense is, you know, there's about half of those that I think are very real, right? Those are, there's three developments I can think of right now that are in process and are going to happen. The other 500 or so, I think there's some question as to steps that need to be taken in order for those to, you know, be likely in '25. So I would hesitate frankly to put a number on that.
So I guess just looking at the, and I don't have the forecast in front of us, did you, did you incorporate that into the new growth forecast for FY '25?
When I did my forecast from, like, a couple of months ago.
Some of this is incorporated, but that was, the housing was not.
Okay.
That's a relatively new number.
And the definitive amount of the TIFs was just recently provided to me within the last couple of weeks from the assessor's office.
Okay.
So I don't, didn't have that as an exact number back when I did that six months ago.
All right.
So do you want me to go through the rest of the presentation?
Well, I just, I guess I had a couple of other questions just on the slide before we move on. So increased revenue associated with the MBTA service and the Route 79 development, I agree with my colleague in seat two that, you know, I don't anticipate any real, I guess, benefit or revenues coming from the 79 development, at least for another three years, right? Because the property's got to be turned over before anything can be developed, and I don't know that there's a whole lot of parcels around there that would be developed.
So I think there's, there's two areas of potential development. So there's the new parcel, there's the newly created parcels that at this point belong to the state that need to be turned over, and then I think there's opportunities created simply by the opening of those spaces from adjacent parcels that could result in, and again, I don't want to speak to projects that are not yet sort of in the public domain, but from what we're hearing, there's the opportunity for certain projects to begin sooner than the three- to four-year timeframe, because those are not on land that's already owned by the state. Okay. Excuse me, just for point of clarification, Seth, when you say from what we're hearing, who are you hearing this from? Is it the state that's telling us this, or what, who's, who's making these projections? There's a, so what we did in looking at what we think '25 could look like is, it's kind of a combination of what is, what the city engineer, what the building department is hearing generally in preliminary inquiries, what the, you know, what Mr. Fiala is hearing, what other, you know, even bankers around the city. I mean, it's a combination of different information that you gather and you judge its credibility and try to get a sense of what that looks like and what the timeframe is. So a lot of it is speculative, but it's enough where I'm optimistic enough about it, and the administration is optimistic enough about it, to suggest that '25 is very likely going to be a significant increase over '24. Okay, so there's a lot of people talking about the potential of what could go on there. That's correct. Department heads and others are like, "Okay, thank you for clarifying that." Counselor Kadeem, I apologize.
No, it's okay. And that, and that's why, I guess, my, my line of question and my colleague's question is just really trying to identify, you know, I know it's forecasting these, these numbers, and there's nothing definitive in terms of that's what we're going to get, but really trying to identify how realistic this is going forward, because I think there's going to be significant increases, as everybody knows, we've got collective bargaining agreements, we've got Diamond coming onboard. So, you know, when we talk about 2.7 million in new growth, to me, I'd only see that as a $700,000... I'd only see that as a $700,000 increase, because you're averaging, or should be averaging somewhere around 2, 2.5.
And we did only include 700,000.
All right, okay. And then, so the other question I had was just the, the statement there with increased revenue associated with the MBTA. So what is it, and you talked a little bit about just valuations, is that, all that was, was just?
That's, that's the extent of it, is valuations.
Okay.
Yep.
I wasn't sure if, because I wasn't familiar with any other revenue. I wasn't sure if the MBTA was kicking over revenue to the city or anything like that.
No, there's no other new revenue associated with that agreement. It's simply valuations.
Okay. Now, with the valuations, we would already pick that up, though, with the 10-year revout coming in, right?
That's true. You're right. There is overlap there.
Okay. All right. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further questions?
All set?
No further questions? Good, you can continue with the presentation.
So it's my pleasure to present the fiscal '24 budget, and I...
Could you, could you please just put the microphone a little closer?
Yeah, I just don't want to get...
Thank you.
We have met with all of our directors and department heads and approached this with a team attitude. We work together to present a budget that invests the resources to our priorities. The revenue budgeted are based on the following assumptions. We're using the House figures while we're still waiting for Conference Committee to release final numbers, which, as many of you know, may not happen for several more weeks. We are budgeting net school spending at 100%, and we're using 840,000 of free cash to cover our Diamond short-term interest. There's 4.5 million of ARPA used. This is the last full fiscal year that we will be able to have this available, and we want to ensure that it is committed, and it's not available for any kind of clawbacks. We are only using half of the Derfie debt exclusion, and we just want to make, this was not implemented at all in the first fiscal year of '22, which was about 4.5 million. In fiscal '23, we only implemented 2.5 million, half of it. And again, fiscal '24, only half of that is built in, to try to alleviate some burden to the taxpayers. And we are projecting new growth to be 2 million, and we are using 2.5% increase in the tax levy.
And I'll let you finish your presentation, just one question, just along the lines that Council President had asked. So he was just asking about a potential estimated free cash number for the FY24, but there was a question asked at the last council meeting about the FY22 certification. Was, was that certified, the free cash?
Yes.
So how, how much was, was that?
3.9 million, I believe.
Okay.
We have 1.9 left right now.
Thank you. Did that all sound good?
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Alman, go ahead, continue.
So over the prior six months, we began building this budget. We not only looked at historical information, we looked to the future. We know that services are returning to normal, but they're not quite back to the pre-pandemic. And we know there are still many uncertainties around the final cost of the city for Diamond. And again, further guidance is still not available regarding the cannabis host agreements. What we do know is that a priority of the administration was to provide a fiscally responsible budget that also provides relief to taxpayers, while still prioritizing public safety and education. The combined pressures on the budget have required us to allocate ARPA funds to support eligible items. By doing so, this provides, gives us, alleviates pressure to the taxpayers, and also allows us to not use other resources and to help us build up stabilization funds. What we're, again, we've discussed before, all indications point to optimism. We know about TIF phased-in new growth. We know there's new market rate housing that will be coming. There's continued utility investments in their infrastructure. Cannabis state excise tax will be grown, will have seven, will be fully online by fiscal '25. And continued commercial investment will total over 4.5 million in new revenues. Free cash certification over the last two years has been strong, allowing the city to build up our stabilization fund, currently at 8.4 million. Today's balance of 1.9 million of free cash indicates the city is able to transfer, we expect to transfer by, before the end of this fiscal year, to get our stabilization fund to 10 million. The city has generated an average of 3.2 million in annual free cash for the last five years. Continued strong tax collections, estimated receipts, and management efficiencies will continue this trend. Our ARPA funds are allowing the city to invest in our community. Utilization of these funds and investing ARPA in capital expenditures will provide years of relief to the operating budget, reduced borrowing for the general fund and enterprise funds. And we also have six out of seven collective bargaining agreements were settled this year. And just to highlight some of, I mean, that we've provided for ARPA funds, 13 million to sewer, traffic signs, body cameras, medical rescue vehicles, dump trucks for our Parks Department, new mowers for the Parks Department. Those are just a few of the items. We believe in funding education as one of the best investments to assure a bright and strong future. However, it's important to remember that the city must match every million of Chapter 70 funds with about 170,000 in local tax revenue. This is amounting to an extra $2.2 million increase in our local contribution this year.
I'm waiting for the President to recognize me. So I just wanted to stop you around the end.
I don't want to finish the presentation, but if we're going to, what would you do?
Well, she was on the ARPA piece, my question is, I think Councilor Perera asked the question. So the Bristol County ARPA and the federal ARPA, what do we have left? So that's, for me, that's probably a daily question you deal with.
Sure.
You should have an answer.
So the, the federal ARPA is 32 million, 33 million, thereabouts, with including the lost revenue provision. And the reason I say that is that, as you recall, with the mayor's advocacy to the governor, or to, well, to the state, they carved out this $10 million provision where you could kind of use it however you wanted, free of categories. So all told, we're in the 30s with regard to...
It's unencumbered?
So, so only a small portion of that's unencumbered. The thing about ARPA money is, is in order to use it, you have to identify a specific use that qualifies under the ARPA provisions. So there's a number of categories, and it might be, you know, community impact to reduce gun violence. That's one of them. There's broadband internet is a category. So there's a number of categories, the ARPA money has to be used in order to... So you'll recall when we had the conversation about the county ARPA money, we, there was justifications associated with each of those costs, the, the street sweepers and the graffiti machines and all that, because they had to fit within a category. With regard to the county ARPA money, is that right?
No, that's not county, that's, this is, this is only city. I only had the city with me, I don't have county, that's current city.
I apologize, I don't have the county, I don't have the county number, but the, the city number is in that 30-plus million.
Okay, I brought a question I intend on answering later, what happens after, post-ARPA?
Yeah, exactly.
That's, I think that's the huge question here for most of us on this council. So I'll ask that question later on, I know you're going through your, but that's definitely a very significant question, post-ARPA. Where are we? I mean, I know we're spending a lot of things on capital improvements and purchasing equipment and purchase contractors and purchase, but, I mean, there's a time where that all has to be replaced. And I'm not saying it's not a good thing, it's a good thing that we, we have all, we have this. But that's a key question for me, post-ARPA. And that Councilor Kadeem says it quite often, long-range planning. And that's going to be probably one of the only questions I have when we go through the budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. Seven, can you speak now, or do we tell you?
Yes, a quick question, Mr. President. The last collective bargaining agreement is?
FIRE.
FIRE. What's the timeline? Do we have an update on when that's going to be figured out?
So we were, so we've been negotiating with FIRE for, gosh, better part of a year plus. And I know everyone's been working hard to try to get an agreement, we weren't able to do that. We had an arbitration scheduled for yesterday. The arbitration was canceled due to an emergency with one of the witnesses in their family. It was apparently a very serious set of circumstances. And the new arbitration has been scheduled for either mid-July or mid-August. And those dates are set by the state. So we would love to do it, you know, tomorrow, if we could. But we rely on the state arbitration committee to set whatever dates they're available, and then we get to pick from them.
Okay. Are there any assumptions in the budget for what that, what impact that CBA could have on the budget for next year?
There are, there are. So we, we've budgeted a percentage, it's a significantly higher percentage than in years past.
Mr. President, point of order, I don't think that they can be talking about what percentage or how much you put in there. Just be careful, Mr. Aiken, because it's negotiations, and that's not something to be discussed on the floor. Just as a caution.
We can, we can ask how long it's going to take, but I think Councilor Perera is right, we shouldn't be getting into the details of what percentage is or not percentage is.
I yield, thank you.
So the, the question I asked was, is there assumptions built into the budget? The answer is yes.
There are assumptions built into the budget, and...
There always is.
It's consistent with, well, it's consistent with what we've been trying to work on.
Thank you. Yield.
Ms. Alman, continue.
While we are grateful for this additional inflow for education, the matching contribution required is quite significant. The operating budget is increasing 28 million, which 60% of that increase comes from Chapter 78 for education. From 2020 to 2024, Chapter 78 to the city has increased an average of 10%, while unrestricted state aid has increased an average of 3%. The increase in the city's net school spending obligation is rising higher than revenues, leaving little for the, little for the remaining obligations for the city. Again, the impact of Diamond, the estimated cost to the towns. This is being monitored, as we spoke about earlier. The figures provided to the city from Diamond in December 2022 have already since increased due to interest rates. These figures are extremely impactful to the city's budget and not sustainable. We have already received notice that the original estimate of 618,000 has risen to 830,000 just for fiscal '24. By 2026, the cost of 6.5 million will represent approximately 2% of our operating budget. As you can see, this is the most recent debt schedule. We've requested an, an updated one. As of today, they did not have one for us to be able to provide. So this was just the original one, and you can just see how impactful it becomes as we go further on to the years. And we feel this is another reason, again, as we're using the ARPA revenue, not using other resources to build up stabilization funds to help us meet some of this concern that we have coming down the road. After the last three years of dealing with the impact of COVID on our budgets, we are beginning to move forward back to what everyone has coined the new normal. What really hit home during this was that we really need to build up our rainy day funds. And it's a very difficult task for any gateway city. Just wanted to highlight the appropriations by category. As we can see, the majority of our appropriation is in education. And the second biggest is our public safety and retirement, health insurance. And the remaining departments are, account for altogether 15.2%. While I'm sure that every department can speak to the challenges, we all know that during recent years, the Commonwealth has seen unprecedented retirement by experienced municipal employees. As a result, the city is competing with other municipalities, some more affluent, to attract municipal workers. This has impacted all of our city departments, including police, fire, EMS, water, sewer, city operations, community services, finance, and administration. We're pursuing strategies to respond to this. For example, we're evaluating our existing staff to identify their potential for advancement in their departments and other departments, providing upward mobility. We're working with the city council to review salaries to make them more competitive in today's municipal employment marketplace, and providing education to staff and using outside consultants as appropriate to provide technical services and mentoring. The proposed budget allows continued investment in our city while remaining fiscally prudent. It allows the continued growth and growing of our stabilization fund, allows collaboration between departments to develop strategic plans. And we just wanted to highlight that this is the estimated savings by not implementing the full Derfie debt exclusion. And this is just a highlight, overall highlight of our total budget, showing that our revenues are increasing at, you know, a modest 3% without education. And excluding the increase in education, the budget is increasing 2% overall for all other city departments, just in the operating budget. And we just wanted to highlight how our stabilization fund has been since 2017. And at this point, we're now growing to a, we expect to grow to $10 million, and it'll be the highest it's been since 2017, since prior to 2017 even. And that's the end of my presentation.
Councilor C. Six, Councilor Vice President, Perera.
I'd like to get a level debt, you put in the most recent Diamond debt schedule, and it has from 2021 to 2030 the amounts. Do we have that for Derfie? Because for Derfie...
Oh, yeah, we have that, I can get you that.
Can you do that?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'd like to know, what is the, what are we paying for?
So just to be mindful, we still have 13 million that's on a band that we will need to be long-termining, but we won't know the final amount we can long-term, because they're doing the close-out process now.
Okay. I, I would just like the same thing for comparison of what Diamond cost, what Derfie cost, and what we have. And I get it when you say that, you know, we do care about education. We do, unfortunately. You know, with COVID, lots of kids had issues. The school department is dealing with, you know, English language learners. They're dealing with children with mental health and special needs, like trying to help everybody, because really COVID hit a lot into that, so. And, and I get it. This year, the council went up 2.5% on taxes, I understand that. But the value of homes increased. How much more did we get in taxes than we did last year? Because of the increase, because of the reval? Do you know that, or could you get me that?
Yeah, I can get you that. I don't, I don't know that specifically, but I don't have to.
I'm just curious. Because when we talk about new growth, you know, and more homes coming online or apartments, in those homes oftentimes comes children, too. So what the person is paying for taxes, and what we pay to the school department to educate those children, sometimes the taxes aren't enough, depending on how many children are in the home, to pay that off. That's why some communities have building moratoriums, you know? Not that I would want. Fall River to have one, because it's not a good thing. For me personally, I like to see people moving in. And all of the homes that are coming are all market rate. So again, we get into that whole market rate and affordable, and Fall River has a high percentage of affordable housing, more than other communities. So I'd like to mention that. One of the other things that you said, Ms. Alman, in the end of your, was shocking about how communities are having a difficult time because affluent communities are paying more, and many people retiring. And at the last meeting, I mentioned something about the consultants that we have, and what is that all about, et cetera. Since then, I have called friends of mine that work in surrounding communities and other towns and different councils, and a lot of them seem to be using consultants. Do you, can you explain that a little bit?
So there's a, I mean, a severe need for, across municipal finance, across all of our departments. So what's happening now is you're seeing, you know, companies are starting these new businesses, and their whole business model is to go in and act in municipal, fill in positions. And there's one particular one that I had mentioned to you. And he goes in, you know, one day to this municipality, another day in this municipality. Clifton Larson has, has a consulting branch. Bartholomew's developing a consulting branch to do all this. And a lot of it's, you know, retirees that are going and doing these, these services, because there's just nobody out there to hire.
All the ones that are out there to hire want a lot of money, and we don't have that.
Yeah. And just throwing more money at a problem isn't, you know, going to necessarily be what's in the best interest for the city.
All right. Thank you. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for the President. Councilor C. One, Councilor here.
I guess a point of information. So this is just the public hearing, so we're going to have an opportunity to ask the administration revenues and all that.
Yes, Councilor.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. There being no further questions, I want to thank you for coming down and being a proponent of this municipal budget for 2024. Are there any opponents to this municipal budget in the public hearing? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing has been made in second, it all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, this public hearing is now closed. Guys, also, we're going to move right into finance. City Council Committee of Finance to order the clerk will call the roll.
Counselors' committee?
Here.
Deanna?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Well, Lindy? Kellert here?
Yeah.
Herrera?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Clara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First, I believe we have one individual that you're going to sit at the zipper time. Don't you ask me what to speak? No problem. Item number two, since no one has signed up since the zipper time, School Department presentation and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. Please come down and... Again, I know we all know who you are, but if you could, please state your name and position and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools.
Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Okay, so if we can get started on, first of all, thank you for having us. On April 11th, we came and we actually did our presentation for our projected budget. What I have before you, I gave you before, was since our meeting, we had our hearings for the school committee, and we got feedback from our school committee, and went back and revised, made some revisions based on feedback. And you will see, you have two documents that I passed out. One of them articulates, we, last time I was here, we were proposing that we were going to reduce the transportation budget to 10 million and take that, the difference, the 1.5 million from the circuit breaker. After a lot of discussion, we, what we have done is we've modified that, and we actually have created a document that shows that there's a $10 million transportation that the remaining difference, we have put back into our special ed budget, and we've invested in some positions. So since our March, the other document that you have in front of you is since our March 20th, when we had our initial budget presentation to the school committee. Mr. Almeida and I presented our budget, and what we have done is we've made some adjustments to our budget. It didn't change the bottom line because what we've done is we reduced a couple of line items to reallocate some of the funds. So we've added an additional vice principal position to Henry Lord Community School. That's our largest community school. It's larger than our middle schools. It has 820 students. So now they will have three vice principals. We also are adding an additional special education administrator to focus on compliance and work with the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. And DURFI High School, as a result of enrollment numbers, requested an additional art position and additional position for early childhood program. We actually absorbed our early childhood. People Link used to use our facility and have a program there. They moved to their facility, and we absorbed the students that were there and have added on. So we needed to add another position. And with the difference from the circuit breaker, we are, as I said, we added one special education supervisor, two speech and language pathologists. Those are the results of numbers. One evaluation team chair and one special education clerk to the department. So those are positions that were added that were not reflected in the initial presentation and have since been, and the budget has been adjusted, line items. And certainly, we can answer any questions as a result of the changes or what we initially proposed to you.
Thank you. Counselor, seat six, Counselor Vice President Perro.
I do watch the school committee meetings at home and impressed with some of the individuals that I hear speaking before the school committee. And one in particular was a night that I watched, and they were talking about all of the paperwork that needs to be done for the state, and that some of it can take an entire day to do one. And then if we don't do it, then we're in trouble because it's not done. So I think some of those positions that you're putting in, in the long run, save us money. The preschool, what's happening with the preschool superintendent, if you could tell us?
For our expansion of preschool classrooms? Sure, we actually added classrooms this year. We have been working with the city. We're looking for, working on actually adding another site where we're going to add more classrooms. We are renting right now on Eastern Avenue, where the old Montessori school.
Right.
And where our goal is to also open up classrooms. Right now, the long-term goal is we're going to create a modular site on Globe Street, and we're in the beginning process, stages of hiring an OPM so that we can design that and move our three-year-olds there. And our goal would be to have the four-year-old preschool classrooms in schools as they are the pipeline for kindergarten and the three-year-olds located in the modular units.
And I've got to tell you, I do like the community schooling idea. I think that Henry Lord has done very, very well. I know Dr. Brownard was there, and I, you know, been there a couple of times. They've asked me to go and speak and do other things, and I've gone. And I'm going to tell you, I wish that all of our schools could be K to eight because then, you know, middle schools, when everybody's hormones are surfacing, I think it would be less students in a particular school. And I don't know what that would take to change that. If it would be plumbing, we'd have to have lower toilets maybe, desks. Can we adjust those desks? But that's something I really wish that they, you know, that the school department would look at. I don't know what the cost would be.
We are looking at that. I'm a firm believer in the K to eight model. That's how I started. I mean, during, we converted that to a K to eight, pre-K to eight. I do think that there's a time, there's a place for pre-K to eight, as well as some traditional middle schools. But, and that's something, there has to be some retrofitting, which would come at a cost. But we actually have been exploring how we could take one of our large elementary schools that feeds into one of our middle schools and how we could potentially start there and see how we could, you know, phase in and phase out and perhaps move that way. So that's, those are discussions that we're having in turn.
I just think you'd have smaller sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes and be able to keep a better eye, help those children that maybe need a little bit more and do that. I mean, I've worked K through eight, and I think it works well. On the other hand, I would like to say that the Alumni Association had something the other night at the high school, and I was able to go and check out the field. So Mr. Pacico, kudos to whoever's doing that and whoever, I know you're overseeing that. But I think those fields are first class. So good luck.
Thanks. They are, they are first class, and the baseball team actually played a scrimmage on it yesterday under the lights, and it was incredible.
Did they win?
Well, it was a scrimmage, so we're going to call, yeah, we're going to call it a draw. But yeah, they did, and it was, it was senior night, so seniors got to play on that field. And they will, they're in the tournament, so we'll see if they can't get a home game played on the field. And the other fields are following. Softball will be ready before the end of the month of June. The stadium is ready right now for graduation. It's set up for graduation, and the practice field is new and already being used. So we're in real good shape.
I think it looks great. But the other thing too that I heard a discussion about was about keeping the property, you know, everything tidy and neat, and it's hard to do. And, you know, you have so many workers, and sometimes we have to call people in because initially, when the school was built, I was on that building committee, the landscaper has a contract, they're going to take care of it for a certain period of time. Then we have to take care of it. If we don't take care of it and pay to take care of it, then people say, we build stuff and we don't maintain it, which has happened, which has happened in the city. So I was glad to see that, you know, you reached out and made sure that those were taken care of, that we had the manpower there to do that. But I really don't have any questions. I think, you know, that the school department is doing a really good job with educating kids. I mean, I've heard positive things. I mean, I've heard negative things too, but for the most part, I've heard a lot of positive. And I, not like I've heard in the past, so kudos to you. I know we spend a lot of money, but transportation is out of control. You know what irks me though, when you see a bus go by and there's four children on the bus? Some people have a hard time putting their child on a bus. So we're paying all this money for transportation, but they're not utilizing it. You still have long lines of traffic. I know people on Meridian Street have complained about traffic there and other schools as well in tight neighborhoods. And I don't know what the, what the fear is of having a child on a school bus. I went on a school bus. I went with Brian Bentley on a school bus together every day. But it just seems, has people commented to you about that? Like that they're afraid to put kids on a bus? What is the rationale, I wonder, for people not wanting that? I don't know.
I don't believe it's fear.
What is it?
Well, some of it is the fact that they don't qualify. So there's a whole bunch of people that live within the mile that still don't let their child walk to school. So that's those cars, the majority of those cars. Right, but, and then buses, especially certain buses, our door-to-door services, timeout before they fill up. So we can't keep kids on the bus more longer than an hour. So the time of picking up from point A to point D, all those little stops take up all the time.
Well, thank you.
And so you could have a bus that can hold 50 students, but only 25 of them get picked up because they timeout.
Well, thanks for clarifying that because I, you know, I wondered, like, what is it? Are you afraid? I mean, but other than that, thank you very much. With that, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Pacico, I can tell you this, a lot of the bus stops, they don't have cover there, do they? They don't have, like, the little places where people can go and get cover if they're waiting for the bus.
There is none of the...
If it's raining out or snowing out, which happens a lot down there.
Yeah, the city buses have some spots, but not, not some...
Most kids that get dropped off on the school bus are sitting in the car that their parents are waiting for the school bus to come because there's no place, there's no shelter stops. So the parents say, why don't I just drive you to school since I got to wait in the car for my son to, because it's going to get soaking wet, or my daughter? So we should look into that because I can't tell you how many times I drive by and I see kids waiting for the bus, and there's no shelter, and it's raining out, and they don't have umbrellas, most of them, and it just kills me. Can we look into putting shelters up with either the bus company or some kind of grant? There has to be something we can do to put some shelter up at these bus stops so kids will take the bus when it's raining.
We can look into it, and there are some spots that have always been bus stops, and then there's a whole bunch that pop up here and there, depending on the population. But we can look into seeing if there's some funds available.
Because I bet you, I bet you the attendance is a lot less when it's raining out than when it's not raining out. And 90% of those kids that take the bus refuse to do it in the rain because they get soaking wet. And it's just sad that it seems like Fall River can't provide some kind of shelters for the people that need it the most that are waiting for the bus stops. I've been trying to do it for a longest time at the old high school, and finally we get one up there, and then thank God you put a new one in at the new high school as well really quick because I can't tell you how many times I drive by shelters, no shelters, but bus stops, and I see the parents, four or five cars deep, sitting in the cars with their children because there's no shelter there, and so I don't blame them. I drive my son or daughter to school as well if that was the case. So we should probably look into that. Counselor, in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Yes, Ted. To the bus stop point, I know you pushed for that, Council President, for the DURFI project, but I too see children waiting for the bus in the pouring rain, all ages. And it's, yeah, I don't know why we can't do something, so I echo, I agree with you. The other question I have, or first comment, I went to the game yesterday, and it was fabulous. I loved seeing the spirit of the kids and how engaged they were with their coaches and how engaged they were in the game, you know, talking and supporting, when they were at bat, talking each other up. And just, it was just wonderful to see. And they, the next, well, that was a friendly game, right, with Ponacquid? So their playoff game, they made the playoffs, and their next game is Saturday night at the field. So I urge whoever can go, to go. I attended with Mr. Mike Heron and Tom Aruda, and who was recently voted as the most outstanding baseball player in a great former area. And it was, we just had some nice chats and reminisced, so it was wonderful, wonderful to see. And the softball, I go by there daily, not to pat myself on the back, but I really do because it just, on my way home from work, it makes me feel happy. And just seeing how far we've come, Counsel Maron and myself, over 20 years ago, we were big-time proponents of the new school construction throughout the city and the fields. And it's just, for me, it's just so rewarding to see what's going on up there. And it's, in my opinion, of course, as Counsel Perro said, there is some negative stuff going. But, I mean, that's part of, it's part of public education, you know? But there's so many wonderful things going up there and so hard-working people that it really makes me feel really happy, okay? So that's that comment. The next question is the Watson School. I drive by there quite often. I see there's still activity there, so that's not finished yet.
So we're in phase three, the final phase of that project. The elevator was part of phase two, just about wrapping up right now. The air conditioning system is going in as we speak, and that'll probably...
Yeah, we talked to air conditioner earlier.
Yeah, so this is, so this is air conditioning now. This is heading up to probably December before we wrap it up. But it's windows are new, ceilings, handicap bathrooms, all the way up and down that building. There's a lot of progress. It is a 1905 building that is really up to date and has all of the amenities.
Excellent.
It'll be a very nice building when it's finished.
And how about the Tansy?
The Tansy has new windows, new heating system, and small...
And everybody's asking questions because of the older schools.
Small little improvements as it goes through the west stall. Again, the city worked on that project extensively, so...
And the final question for me is, forgive me, I have to say it, but when you, I don't have to say forgive me. But when you look for the budget and you look at the summary with the race and ethnic makeup of our student population, you go through every single school, and where I'm coming from is I like to see the kids' needs met. The kids' needs met, and let's face it, the way I, I was a teacher and the way I was taught is that students feel much, much more comfortable when, and they learn much better when they see individuals that speak their language and look like them. You know, so I don't want to get in trouble for that, but I'm not talking about, well, maybe I am, affirmative action. And it's across the board. I think it's with the police department as well, who interact with the community, our young people. And so if you look at the makeup, and I did the calculations, and then you look at our population of employees, I think something has to be done. I know it's a difficult thing, Ms. Superintendent, but what are we doing to recruit and attract a population of teachers that reflect the population of our schools?
I think we, you asked this question last time I was here, and I will say that the answer is the same. We are being proactive and very aggressive in recruiting. You know, we attend recruitment fairs, we have hosted ours. One thing that we did this year that is different from other years, we hosted multiple jobs... we did this year that is different from other years, we, um, uh, hosted multiple job fairs different times of the day. We also, uh, had a Saturday event. Uh, we went to Bridgewater State University. We've put billboards up. Um, we are, uh, publicizing, we're going to the schools, to the colleges. Um, there is a staffing shortage, nationwide staffing shortage.
How successful have we been?
You know, well, certainly Mr. Coogan is here, because I knew that you, uh, probably were gonna ask that question again, right?
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, certainly he can expand on that, but, um, we have made progress in some schools. If you go to, um, you know, Talbot, you, you'll see that, that, um, uh, staff is very diverse, um, uh, and, um, every, we need to diversify our workforce. We know that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I, uh, our population has changed. It needs to change with adults as well as students. That is something that is in the forefront.
And I know you don't have a magic wand, obviously, but...
No, we wish we did. We wish we did.
So does the city. City needs to do it too.
Good evening. So, uh, my most recent analysis was done in late January, uh, February, of a year-to-year, uh, movement in our diversity and equity efforts. Uh, we're up about two and a half percent in, um, teachers, as far as, uh, diversity. Uh, we're at about...
Could you repeat that, please? Two and a half percent in terms of...
Two, two and a half percent more diverse.
More diverse, teachers, okay. How about, uh, student population?
Student population, um, I would say is, that's a very moving figure. One of the things that, one of the challenges that we face, and if you look at, um, the, um, diversity breakdown of the surrounding communities, I would say, uh, in most cases, you're talking probably ninety percent Caucasian, uh, teachers. Uh, Brockton, New Bedford, maybe slightly in the high eighties. Beyond that, most of the surrounding communities around here are probably in the mid nineties as far as their percentage of teachers. The pool of candidates that comes in is relatively, it's more diverse, but it's relatively small. And in a situation like ours, you have approximately nine hundred and seventy-five people in the teachers' unit. And so when you hire, um, I would say we're doing a great job with our new hires. We're much more diverse in our new hires. But what happens is you don't move that, that percentage overall in, in any leaps and bounds. So when I talk about the numbers that I just gave to you, those are numbers in the overall population. So you've got almost a thousand teachers, and if you get more diverse, it's only gonna happen incrementally. What I will say is that, as our workforce gets younger, um, we're, we're doing a much better job with that. And, uh, as Superintendent Ponce pointed out, um, the new hires coming in is a much more conscious effort on our part to try to, uh, focus on that area of diversity and equity. And, uh, one of the things we've seen, the more significant bounces in, in terms of our diversity, is in our other operational areas, cafeteria, uh, custodial, maintenance, et cetera. So those are the areas where you see those bigger increases. However, uh, in the, in the educational workforce, and specifically in teachers and administrators, while we've gotten about five percent more diverse in our administration, and I would say that's a large account, um, of the amount of, uh, people that are considered in, in our administration structure, counselors, et cetera, we're getting more, uh, more of a focus on, on being more diverse in those areas. In the teacher ranks, it's a little bit slower to move the number because of the volume, so...
So the, um, this is a topic of discussion in the school committee, for sure, right?
Absolutely.
So I don't wanna overstep my authority here, but, uh, I think it's important, and it's, it was, well, no magic wand, but that issue's been talked about for a long time, a long time, where we haven't, it's in the fall, but we haven't really kept up with, uh, with the changes in our community. So, thank you. I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
If, if I might add one, one last thing. Um, with our most recent contract, we moved the salary scales, uh, significantly in, in teachers and administrators. And I think that's made us more attractive and more competitive to that relatively small pool of diversity candidates that are, that are coming into education. So while the last couple of years have been very challenging in terms of hiring in general, specifically in those groups, I think we're more competitive now, and I think that's helped to move some of those numbers I referred to earlier.
Okay. I yield.
There you go. Counselor C D, Counselor Washington?
Thank you. I just wanna, um, go back to transportation just for a brief second. Um, so, I just wanna say I have three kids at home in the Fall River Public School System. I had four. He's graduated Durfee. Um, and I am stuck in that Meridian Street traffic daily. I have one in the Sylvia School. I will say they won the city championship, my goodness, basketball. Um, they did well. But, um, I also have one in Durfee, who the bus is an issue. Meridian Street is an issue with the high school bus. And I know you just said the mile to the house, but I, the, where the bus drops kids off for the Meridian Street is like, uh, more than a mile to like, where the houses are. And you're right, my children are princesses, the three girls that I have in school, so they will not walk in the rain. I think they could sometime, but not in the pouring rain, the high school ones, but, um, or there's snow, and so shelters would be a problem. But when they're walking over a mile up that big hill, um, all the way down to Meridian, it's, it's a hike. It really is. After a long day of school, the, the drop-off zone is down the bottom of North Main Street, pretty far down, and they have to walk up that massive hill all the way down Meridian Street. It's quite a distance. And so that, and it's not just my children, it's, it's quite a bit of children down that way, so it, it should be looked into. And I do love the idea, um, Council President, of shelters for kids across the city, if that, you know, is possible. But I, I did wanna say that, that, that area in Fall River, um, I've felt for a while, there, it's just not meeting the, where the kids are walking distance.
So the one, the one mile is elementary?
Oh, okay, so...
Um, and then, um, the secondary is, is a mile and a half?
Well, you've got children. These high school kids can get in a lot of trouble in a, or over a mile walk from high school, so please. And it's, it is, and it's kinda scary. You're walking through that industrial park area. Um, in the winter months, it's a little bit scarier, and it's a long walk. It really, really is. And, um, there's been a couple of scary episodes, and so, and the, and there's quite a bit of kids that get dropped off down there. And so it, it should be something that's looked into, I would say, for the kids on that end of the city.
So we'll do a, we do a yearly review with SRTA for all of our transportation needs that they take care of, uh, the trippers, the ones that go directly to Durfee. And then, of course, the regular, so all of our students have Charlie Cots that they're issued. So that Charlie Cod will get them on the regular routes too, so, but those, they have to go to terminal and then take a, uh, transfer.
I would think if, maybe if one end of Meridian was dropped off and the other, 'cause Meridian's pretty long, so if they could at least get to Meridian Street by a bus, and there was a bus that dropped them off at Meridian somewhere, or, or that New Boston Road area, would be safer for them than having to trek through that, that area. It's, it's just, um...
We'll be definitely looking into it.
Thank you. With that, I yield, Counselor President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C seven, Counselor Ponce.
Thank you. Mr. Almeida, can you give us an update on the ESR balances?
Um, so, the, for ESR two, as of June thirtieth, the balance is gonna be roughly a million dollars. And ESR three, the balance is gonna be about thirty-four and a half million dollars.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, on the, in the binder, it talks about the unfunded positions. I'm just curious, um, I may have missed this in watching a school committee meeting, but, um, what's some of the rationale for not funding some of these positions? 'Cause, hey, counselors obviously are a big thing currently, so I'm curious, just some rationale behind all that.
I think that, um, I'm trying to find that slide, but certainly, um, the way we do it is we have, um, department meetings where every principal comes to us and advocates for their positions, um, for their needs. When we, when they come to us, we ask them, what's their rationale? What's the data that supports adding that position, et cetera? So we prioritize, and we look at the data, we look at the numbers. So if I, if I'm looking at this Watson, some of these unfunded positions, we've actually funded after the, we initially, uh, did the initial budget, and then we went back. So we prioritize. We said first, we're gonna fund these, and then we'll go back and see where we are with the budget, and then add, uh, fund those. But the additional, so for guidance councils, for instance, um, the middle schools, um, wanted an additional guidance counselor. We're still, the caseload is still, um, at national rates or a little lower. We, we added school adjustment counselors to all the middle schools. They have an additional fourth, um, um, school adjustment council, so we prioritized that, as well as the SEL liaison, and we said, "We'll look later on at, at those positions." So that's, that's our rationale for waiting it out to see. We look at numbers, we look at, you know, the needs of the school. Sometimes somebody, uh, came to us and said, "I want," uh, like, I'll say, Doran, for instance, they wanted another intervention. They already had a bunch of interventionists. So we said, "Let's look at our numbers first, our enrollment numbers. Let's look at where we are before we add a position, just because we're saying, oh, we might have these high numbers. I wanna see the numbers first before, uh, we just add positions."
Fair enough. To your, to your letter about the additional special education administrator to support the Assistant Superintendent, is that because of a greater need, a larger enrollment of special education students?
That, uh, well, first of all, um, some of those positions, um, especially with, um, circuit breaker, uh, breaker money, um, some of those numbers have grown. Our, our special ed numbers are actually hovering, projected to hover around twenty-nine percent for next year. We have, uh, many younger, um, children, uh, and we all can, uh, anticipated that kids would qualify earlier on because they had loss. Some of the kids didn't have an opportunity to attend pre-K, or didn't have a typical kindergarten, et cetera, and we're feeling the, that impact. Um, but certainly, uh, we also have some compliance issues that, um, we have to deal with. We, we feel that the department's so large and, um, so spread out, that we need someone to be focused on compliance and making sure that we are, is addressing, uh, some of those needs.
Okay. And my last question goes to, um, the report. It's the budget breakdown by object, and I know, I noticed the tuition line item. It's, uh, object five thirty-two zero zero zero. It's an increase of one point five million. So what, can you explain, Mr. Almeida, a little bit about that, pretty decent increase?
Sure. So the OSD increased their rates for the out-of-district tuitions by fourteen percent. So with that, we've increased our rates so that we can cover it when we do next year.
Okay. Thank you. I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C two?
Good evening. Um, you mentioned that you're renting space at the old Montessori on Eastern Avenue. Um, recently, it was stated at a neighborhood meeting that is gonna be, there's also been a lease signed for the old, um, the school on Townsend Hill for approximately five hundred students?
Right, that's twenty-five oh-one South Main.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, what are the age groups at both of those locations?
The Eastern Avenue, uh, Old Montessori School houses, uh, seven, uh, pre-K classrooms currently. Um, our, right now, we, we have not committed to the, um, we have, uh, um, we're talking and exploring either putting pre-K to eight, making it a two-unit school at the twenty-five oh-one, um, South Main, um, or, depending on the numbers, 'cause you have to look at numbers and where the need is. Uh, we have some schools in the south end that are overcrowded, that we need to, to release some of that pressure. Or it could be a pre-K, uh, pre-K to five. Um, so, but we know that our goal would be to start off opening up with pre-K. We have the potential to open up with, uh, seven pre-K classes first, and then roll into, um, pre-K to five, and then decide, um, and roll over the fifth grade. If it, if it were to go to pre-K to eight, roll over the fifth grade to six, and then so on and so forth.
I know, um, I'm thinking it's a couple of years ago already that it started. Uh, the Wiley School on Kennedy Street was being emptied and renovated, et cetera. Um, what's happened with that?
So we haven't, we didn't do any renovations. We applied to MSBA for funds for roof, boiler windows, and it didn't make the cut. Um, and currently, MSBA is not taking in any new applications for that accelerated repair program. They've, um, stopped for a while, trying to help out all the projects with those increased prices. They're, um, trying to conserve some of their dollars. So the Wiley is sitting in the same position as it was.
That it was.
So we're, our concentration on renovations is Watson.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have fifteen million dollars worth, worth of ARPA, um, HVAC improvements in five schools going on right now.
So will, when the Watson is completed, um, will it reduce the need for some of this space that you're renting, or, or will it just go hand in hand with everything?
So it's, it, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna house the same amount of people, um, that it currently houses. It just will be more comfortable, that it's a better learning environment, um, with state-of-the-art equipment inside that building. And the entire building will be handicap accessible.
Okay. Um, some of, one of, some of the new positions were director slash supervisors. Um, were those positions related to?
Are you looking at the...
I'm looking at the...
From the sheet I gave you today?
Actually, I think I'm looking at the one I had before.
The PowerPoint, from the PowerPoint, yes.
Yeah, PowerPoint.
Oh, this, those seven director supervisors, yes. That's for, we reorganized our facilities and operations, um, department, and there are, um, each division has a director supervisor overseeing that department.
And you didn't have that before?
No, did not.
So a lot of those departments were bunched together under, um, one person, and, um, they were large, very large. The custodial staff is a hundred and two, um, the maintenance staff is twenty-two, the, um, nutrition department is, uh, a little over two hundred. So that, that whole group that sits under, um, facilities and operations is over three hundred employees, and the, the management side was a lot less than it should've been. So it was, it was way too much for the two people who were doing that work. So we've broken it down into separate disciplines, so that it's better managed.
I noticed also that you've, you've added forty-eight pairs. Um, if, if, if my, if I, uh, yeah, recollecting the conversation, um, last year, did you, you didn't fill all the para positions, correct?
Correct, correct.
But this year, you've added on forty-eight, so how, how does that play out?
Certainly, our goal would be to fill them all. I think that, um, Mr. Kadim asked that question, and, uh, we were, were proposing a hundred and sixty-six positions, where we had also, I think it was one sixty-five the year before, and we, and we're ending the year with still some open positions. Obviously, those positions are needed. Last year's goal was to have every pre-K K in first grade with a para, in addition to the needs of our, we increased, uh, para professionals in our special education classrooms, right? So, um, this year, we also are, some of them are need for one and one, depending on the student's IEP, um, as well as some of our, um, sub-separate classrooms may have had two pairs, and the need is that they need to have three pairs in the classroom, depending on the needs of the students. So, um, the goal would be to have them all filled, and, uh, we're gonna be optimistic and, and say that that's what we want. I think, I will say that I think that the, um, we have been, uh, hiring people, and the candidate pools are much better than what they have been in the past. So, um, we're hoping that we're gonna fill them, but you are absolutely right. Um, we struggle to fill every single one.
And the school budget absorbs that? I know that you have some pairs that are under grants, some that aren't under grants. I don't know over the years if it's fewer now, and, and the school side has taken on the, the, should I say, burden of paying the salaries?
So we have one more year of ESR, of, of ESR, and ESR will fund the positions that they've funded, which total about five million dollars, which in FY twenty-five will be built into our budget. But all additional pairs that have been added through this budget process were added through, through the budget.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There being no further questions. Thank you for coming down, and I just wanna say as well that, you know, I'm a big proponent of the K through eight. I went to a Catholic school, K through eight. There was three of us at that school at the same time, and if, it made life a lot easier for my parents to drop us off and pick us up, knowing that we were all together in one location. I think it'd be helping a lot of families that have multiple children. So, thank you very much for the presentation. Move on to item number three. I would ask the, um, public safeties, now come down and entertain the fire department for us, since, hope you'll come back. Chief, welcome. Can you just state your name? I know we know who you are, but most people watching might not know who you are, so just state your name, and, uh, just please, thank you.
Hello, my name is Roger Seabond. I'm the current fire chief in the city of Fall River. Um, good evening, Mr. President, madam, vice president, counselors. The budget presented to you tonight, I believe, is, is very lean, but addresses the probabilities and, um, the possibilities of the four or five apartment, or what would be called to address. Budget allows funding for hundred and ninety-five uniform firefighters and five civilian personnel, um, in keeping with the current apparatus in full service. Said, any questions?
Councilor C two, Councilor Deon.
Good evening, Chief. Uh, I only have a couple of questions. Um, on page two eleven, uh, EMT certification stipends, et cetera. Um, I know that the fire department and the EMS has been separated. Um, so I'm just, I'm just curious, can, maybe perhaps a little confused as to, um, you still have firemen that are EMTs that are assisting EMS? Um, how, how does this all work out?
Yes, um, so it's, it's a contractual thing, but also, um, respond to just under four thousand, I believe, EMS calls as well. So we're first responders and, um, being said, uh, we have, I think there's sixty, uh, EMTs and I think there's five paramedics as well on my job. So the assist at, 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 of course, yes. And we also have, um, ten members that ride the squad as well. It's a combined fire and EMS unit.
That's the, I believe I saw that in the EMS budget, the joint squad, I, I, yes. Okay, so there has not been a total and complete, uh,
Well, it's two separate departments, but still, uh, we're still first responders and we have to respond to medical emergencies as well.
Okay, let's see. And then, um, you have no vacancies in your department?
I think there's, um, is there two in the back there, two or three? Actually, we just had another retirement the other day. I believe there's three vacancies.
Well, I was gonna ask what, I saw that, that you're anticipating eight, um, retirements?
Yeah, every year we use, um, we have about eight to ten retirements. So yes, we, uh, eight personnel moving forward and have identified that they will be retiring. Some have to. Uh, I think there's three of them that are aging out. They're sixty-five and have to leave.
Now have steps been taken for an academy down the road?
I have an academy currently, counselor, and, um, what we do is we try to have one every year. It's a joint academy with other local fire departments, so we pool our resources to actually make it happen. So right now, we have ten, uh, nine in the academy right now. They're in their, they finished the EMT portion of it, um, which was eight weeks long. And now the fire portion of it is ten. I believe they're about halfway done right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C five, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. Just wanna know, one thing, Chief. You were gonna build a building up the airport. And got too costly, Mr. Akins, says we're gonna get it, we're gonna look into it and where it's gonna go. So you went from the airport to maybe the Bedford Street Station for the EMS? And then they were gonna buy a piece of land. That's when I said, whoo, slow down here. So what was, or what is the final outcome of this?
Um, I, I, I really can't answer that. I, I know that, um, we've actually moved some units down to the center fire station from EMS right now. So, um, I'm not sure about any of the land purchase or any of the buildings. I, I, I really can't answer that. I have no idea. That, that would be the EMS side. We haven't changed, uh, our, um, our, um, footprint of the fire department.
All right, thought it was pretty well all together really, but it's, they're separate, right?
It's, it's two separate, uh, departments, yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Akins, what happened?
So at this point, um, the move to the center fire station is ongoing. Uh, so there's improvements to the center fire station. There's movements of EMS units. Um, in terms of the next plan for any other EMS facility, that's still a little bit up in the air. Um, there was some talk of, of maybe trying to use the old Durfee Auditorium. That is a conversation that I think is ongoing, but that probably is not gonna happen. Uh, there's a couple other pieces of property EMS has looked at, but there's nothing really certain at this point. The only thing certain is the move to center fire station and that's, that's happening.
Are you spending money for the, the station?
Money that they already had on hand, so we haven't done anything with the bond.
Who moved into the city hall?
EMS has some administrative folks, uh, on the fourth floor next to the veterans office.
Okay.
So what was happening is, is that, um, so up, up at the fire headquarters, um, you know, there had been, you know, a good partnership there for a while with EMS on one side, fire on the other. But the way EMS was growing, uh, it was getting to the point where even the deputy was sharing her office with, uh, a lieutenant. Even the chief at points was sharing his office. So they essentially needed more room, uh, and there was open space that was being finished already, uh, in government center where people could actually have office space, could have the space they need to do the administrative work, the billing work. Uh, and then the actual operational work continues as it has, uh, with an increased presence at the center fire station.
Just one more fast question. If you could answer it, um, how many influences do we have now?
I think the chief, uh, Olivero, when he comes down, can answer that question.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought. With that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further questions?
I don't have any. I really don't have, um, any questions, Chief. I think your budget is very, the equipment you have is good equipment. Do you, do you foresee needing any new equipment coming down or you, you think you've got some decent stuff?
Well, the, um, the majority of our frontline apparatus are relatively due.
Good.
We have one older ladder truck, I guess twelve years old right now. Typical lifespan is about fifteen years. We have, uh, through the community development, we have, uh, we're in the process of, um, putting bids out for a new engine and a ladder truck. Uh, we have two point five million dollars allocated for that. Um, recently, we, um, refurbished one of our older engines. We, we looked at a, um, an engine that, um, uh, department, I, I think it was Rehoboth was selling. And, uh, it was, uh, two thousand and four, and they wanted like twenty-five thousand dollars for it. And we had it reviewed by a local fire equipment repair company and, um, beautiful truck, low mileage, low operations on the pump. The issue with it was, uh, the frame was rotting out. And come to find out, there was a span, a time span between two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, somewhere in that timeframe, where they couldn't get US steel, use steel from overseas and those vehicles, because they're always wet, their, their frames are rotting out. So, um, we had, uh, a nineteen ninety-eight and a ninety-seven KME. And we had that reviewed for a possibility of doing a refurb on it. And we did a, um, a moderate refurb on one of them and we're in the process of putting out bids for another one right now. So we'll have some, um, capable, um, and reliable backup apparatus. We, they're, they're good pieces of apparatus right now. They're, they're dated, twenty-five years old. Um, but I think with the addition of the, uh, the new engine that we get, thing of it with that is now, um, the last time I spoke to some of the dealers, um, a ladder truck could be as much as two and a half years out and a, um, an engine is about a year and a half out.
Wow.
So we're trying to keep our, uh, our older apparatus in, in, in good shape.
Well, it's gotta be proactive so that, you know, we don't have a lot of apparatus, um, you know, being unusable in a certain amount of time, that if we, you know, keep an eye on that, make sure, as we need them, that we take it one step at a time.
So additional things that we got, we had some grants for some, uh, some equipment, um, through the, um, the assistance of firefighters grant. So we, we got, um, almost fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment through that grant. Through ARPA, we, um, we received, uh, we're in the process of ordering now, um, two more breathing air compressors at, at seventy-five thousand dollars apiece. Ours were fifteen years old, which is basically the lifespan of those. Uh, we had one that was, uh, not working. We've replaced that one already. The one we replaced was, um, through a earmark from the state that Cal Fire actually spearheaded for us. Um, and, uh, there were, there were other things off the top of my head, I really can't think of right now. But there are other things that are moving in the, in the fire department within equipment and, and other things like that.
And let's keep our fingers crossed that we don't have a lot of fires, uh.
If I never go to another fire, I'll be happy.
It was devastating to see the, uh, the fire overrun, uh, South Main. These were the restaurant, you know, you're just, luckily, nobody got her out or passed away.
We had two firefighter injuries, but, uh, they, they fell down the stairs there. But they were, they were, um, one of them's back and the other one will be out for a little while for them.
Gee. And that's what we pray doesn't happen, that no one.
Absolutely.
Gets her. But thank you, Chief, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Yield, Councilor?
Nope.
I said you yield.
I do.
Thank you. Councilor C eight, Councilor Washington?
I just have a, a quick question for you, Chief. Thank you, Council President. Um, last year at this time, I knew, uh, one of the community members came down with a presentation, um, about AC units that he had presented about the Center Street Fire Station. I'm just wondering if you guys got AC units in there. I know it's old. Are your men and women cooled off? I mean, that's a big concern with, I'm just wondering the update on that.
So additionally, with that ARPA funding, um, we, um, were allocated ninety thousand dollars to install some of those mini splits. Um, I'm currently working with, um, Al, um, from facilities. We, um, reached out to a contractor. I can't remember off the top of my head what contractor was. We actually met with him this week, to start, um, working on that. I had to get him all the bills because there's a lot of rebates for those.
Yes.
And our bills are very high in the stations because they're older stations and not very well insulated. So that being said, um, talking to the, um, the owner of the company, so we, we're gonna be do pretty well with this. Uh, it may not fund the complete, um, cooling of the stations, but it's gonna do a lot. And it's something that they're gonna build it, um, or plan to build it, where we can just add on to it. So that would be the center fire station. Uh, center fire station, a lot of money is coming through the, uh, the CPC. I mean, we got, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars. Part of that was, um, uh, air conditioning as well. And, and we're trying to be, um, frugal. We're not gonna, um, condition a whole building. We're, we're basically the living spaces, you know, not the garage areas. And, uh, so it's the other stations, the other three stations will have, um, air conditioning. And again, not every space, but the majority of the living spaces will have air conditioning following that. So that was ARPA money from the city.
So I'm just curious, do you happen to know the full price of what that's gonna cost? Because if it's not gonna cover the full cost of it, is it just simply is asking if, you know, the administration was just down here saying they have thirty-two million in ARPA funding. Is it, do we need to ask for more money to cover that full cost? I mean, that's just basic, um, things we're asking for is these mini split units for your men and women down there. So do you know what the cost is?
So I had to come up with a number and, uh, reached out to, um, a HVAC person and gave me a quick estimate at the time. I think it was about a year ago. Now, obviously, everything changes. The price is continuously going up. And, um, so again, working with Al, we're in the process of, of, of putting something together. And then once we have that plan together, you know, then if, if there's additional, um, funding that we need, we can go to the city and ask about that as well, you know?
Well, I'm glad it's in the works. So thank you. With that, Council President, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C three, Councilor Kilby.
Thank you, Council President. Um, most of my questions have been answered by Councilor Prouder's line of questioning. But, um, just could be a yes or no. You have to get into it. But the contract currently, uh, with the fire, rank and file of the fire department, is it, has it expired at this point?
We're more than a year in arrears. So, so it's been expired for, I think, almost a year and a half, almost two years now.
Say, please, I'm sorry.
Almost two years. It's, it's.
It's been expired, that long?
Yes.
And of course, we're in the negotiations, it's ongoing, two years. Because we had the, we have the fire department, which was settled, and we have the EMS that was settled.
So we have EMS, um, patrol, police, superior police is settled, AFMI is settled, Teamsters is settled, the custodians are settled. Um, the only remaining one is fire.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C one, Councilor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so just along those same lines, so the, the contract's been two years behind, so the.
It's going on two years. It's, it's probably, it's closer to two years than it is a year.
Sure. So the salary wage increase of eight percent, what's, it says see detail, but when we go to details, it doesn't really, I guess, explain it?
So, we've built into the bud, we've built into the budget what we, um, had already offered the union. It's already been provided to the arbitrators. Um, so you're seeing the impact of that increase is already built into the budget.
Because you're at the J L M C, is that what it is?
Yes.
So is, is that, is that the roll-up effect?
That's the roll-up effect.
So it's not eight percent for one year?
Right.
No.
And so that would be the same with the, I guess, the holiday. That's why it's the eight percent.
And that eight percent also includes step increases?
Yes, step, right, yeah. Now, I, I guess, uh, my colleague in C two asked the question, I didn't hear what the question was, but I know it was around EMT. Can you just explain the certification, the stipend? So is, is there a contractual requirement for firefighters to now have EMT stipends? Is that, I mean, not EMT certification?
Any new hire is required to complete EMT, uh, program, uh, because they'd be working on the squad. And, um, and then prior to that, prior to the squad, um, as an incentive, firefighters were given the opportunity to get it on their own and be compensated for it, increase their ability when they work at EMS calls.
So the new firefighters, or is it just basic or is it paramedic level?
Basic.
Basic.
Yes.
Um, and I just had a couple of questions on, on the expenses. So natural gas for heat, I say, I say that's a significant decrease. I tend to be on the other side, uh, with, with my budgets. I'm seeing, I'm seeing an increase and not a decrease, so, uh, I just want to know what the magic touch is on that.
I was, I was looking at that.
I'm, I'm sorry. It's on page two twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Third line down.
I, I see that. Bridgette and I were looking at that a little while ago.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I believe that, so what, again, the, when this budget was being built, we looked at actuals. And so this was based on some actual expenditure, so it looks like there was a little bit more budgeted in twenty-three than was required to be needed.
Okay. And then environmental services, what, what was the environmental services?
What that was, when we had a shop downtown, um, when they closed the shop, we had some hazardous materials down there. So we had to hire a cleanup company to get rid of those.
Oh, okay.
They were just basically laying around. Yeah, some, some, some of the stuff was from, um, like I said, the shop. Other things were from when we had the tech rescue team, some of the scrubbers for the, um, carbon dioxide and things like that.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. What else?
Thank you, Councilor. Any further questions? There being no further questions. Thank you very much, Chief, for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job. Just, I will say this, um, and if it takes over a year and a half to get a truck, I'd stop putting one in from now because we have capital outlay money available in the upper funds and we have to spend it sooner than later.
I'm sorry, can I, can I just ask one question on?
Absolutely, Councilor. Could, Chief, I think you want to ask him the question. Councilor C one, Councilor Kadim?
The equipment, so the apparatus that you were looking for, did you say that's just solely for reserve, right, not frontline equipment?
Uh, no, what, what that is, is, um, so our old, uh, our oldest frontline engine, I believe, is six years old right now. So projecting out, if it's gonna take almost two years to get it, it'll be eight years at a time. What that'll do is that eight-year-old vehicle would be the, the lead vehicle in the reserve fleet. And this new one would be the, uh, primary. The ladder, that's the engine. The ladder truck, again, being twelve years old right now, um, in two and a half years, it'd be fourteen and a half years, that would be the reserve and this one would go into the frontline.
So what was the apparatus you were looking at, Rehoboth?
It was an engine.
It was an engine. So that, that was gonna be used for reserve, not frontline, right?
Yes, yes.
I just, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going back to the days where.
No, 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 not at all. No, I, I hope, I hope not. I hope we never go back to that, those days when we were borrowing trucks from Westport and Somerset. Yes. There was, there was a time, yes, we had an engine from Somerset and Westport in, in Fall River.
We, we did it a couple of times during my, my tenure and it was just not.
One, one quick note on, on procuring apparatus. Strangely, ARPA doesn't actually have a category, really any categories that, that fire fits easily into, including apparatus. So community development is purchasing, uh, the apparatus because they're needed, they're necessary. Um, but even though you can, you know, you can do DCM, you can do police, you can do a lot of things with ARPA, it really does not have a category for fire, so we've had to be creative around that. So we've been able to do some things with fire, but not, not straight equipment and apparatus turnout, that sort of it.
The, the ladder helps with the catch basin, cleaning up the catch basins and digging out and stuff like that, right?
Furthest we went was the air conditioning.
It's under that category.
Yeah, the furthest we went was with the air conditioning, um, and the, um, breathing air compressors to, for air purification in the stations, basically.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilor Kadim's point, the ladder also helps with training. A lot of these trucks could be used for training. Seth, is there anything that prohibits oper, prohibits fire engines from being an oper use or it just doesn't?
So it's, it's not explicitly prohibited. It's more that you have to identify a category that it fits into. Uh, and there's, there's a number of audit levels where it'll get rejected, um, if it doesn't fit into a category. So, you know, that was, that was, that's been sort of the conversation with everything that we've purchased is, does it fit into an ARPA category? And can we in good faith make the argument of how it fits in?
Thanks for clarifying that, because I was under the impression that we could get fire apparatus for that, as a one-time capital expense. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it. Do you yield, Councilor Kadim?
I do. Uh, lost revenue, by the way. We can use it for lost revenue, lost revenue and grants.
That's true. You could use it for lost revenue.
I yield.
Good, good to know. Thank you. Councilor C six, Councilor Vice President Prouder?
Yeah, but I think, uh, Attorney Akins said earlier that out of the ARPA money, ten percent can be used for whatever, that there's no specific category.
It's not ten percent. I think it was ten million, but, but ten.
Oh, ten million.
Um, so that is the lost revenue provision.
Right.
Um, and of course, the, the issue there is, is because everything else is so limited by category, you know, we're looking at that going, okay. you know, we're looking at that going, okay, you know, there are a number of things we might need to use that for, you know, in the event that, you know, something happens, unexpected, whatever. So I think the mayor and CFO Alman, they're trying to be very cautious with how they use it. But you're absolutely right, that is the one area where it's carte blanche.
I thought it was 10%, not 10 million, so thanks for clarifying that. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief St. Martin.
There be no further questions now. I think, Chief, it's fine for you to...
I'm going to walk faster this time.
Good job, Chief, with the presentation. Thank you. Next, we will have the EMS come down, please. Please, if you could just state your name and position for the record so we will...
Tim Olivera, Director of EMS.
Beth Fauntz, Deputy Chief of EMS.
Any questions?
I'll ask a question.
Council C six, Council Vice President Pror.
Could you tell me, Director Olivera, last year, I know that, you know, there was a question with getting paid for ambulance runs and things like that, and that you were like the first right of refusal on getting, if you brought someone, let's say, to the ER.
Yes.
And that person then needed to be transferred to the hospital, you'd get... Is that still happening?
The outbound, yeah, the outbound is still happening with St. Anne's. Everyone we bring to St. Anne's, we get first right of return. That has definitely expanded.
Just at St. Anne's, not at South Coast?
No, not yet. We are trying to work on something, but it hasn't come to fruition at this time.
Okay.
Oh, it's its own, yeah.
I was just curious about that because, because you could build, I mean, there's, you know. And the person already knows whoever dropped them off, so it's kind of comforting to them.
It goes right to the system. When we drop them off, it goes right in the system. So when they get discharged, it just says Fall River, they call us. We run two ambulances now for outbound. We started with one. We have one that does 24 hours, seven days a week, and we have a second one that's Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 9:30 at night.
Great.
And they also back up the city with city calls.
Good. Now, you're moving upstairs to the fourth floor. Has the move been completed? No, you're just...
By Tuesday of next week, it should be.
By Tuesday of next week, so you're not there yet.
No, and that's just billing and admin. And our training division will remain at headquarters because the classroom's up there and we do a lot of integrated training with Fire. So we're going to keep that together up there for now. And I have some admin people at the center station in our office that was remodeled for them at the center station also.
So we have enough furniture up there? I saw some new desks coming in, so.
Yep.
I complained, I thought maybe we could get our chairs redone over here because they're all scratched up. But I do want to take this opportunity specifically to talk to Deputy Chief Fauntz. You are on 24/7, 365 days a year. Because when I have called you about any homeless situation, you are right there. And when I call you about, hey, I heard there's this lady on this spot and like, I know who she is, we've done A, B, C, D. So I thank you because that's a very difficult job to go out, constantly meet with people, help people, bring food. I mean, I can't even remember the day that Tyson gave you, I thought it was 50 pounds of chicken. It ended up being 50.
We actually thought we were getting 110 pounds of chicken and we got 110 cases of chicken.
Cases of chicken.
Before a holiday weekend, so we were very lucky that Eastern Ice was willing to open up a freezer. We had people come and we're like throwing cases in their car, but there were a lot of people that got fed that weekend, so that was nice.
Which was really good. I know the mayor was like, okay, we need to go to Eastern Ice and help them. No, 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 there's pallets. When I called one of the soup kitchen, one of the pantries, and I said, hey, you know, there's 110 pounds, and it was 100, and he said, hey, he said, I just came from there, it's 110 cases. So, but that was, that was a struggle, but you got rid of everything and helped people. So I just, sometimes people criticize a lot of the workers for the city and they don't really see all the good that people do. So on behalf of the city, thank you so much for all that you do. I truly appreciate it. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
There you go, Council C two.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I know this is just for discussion purposes because your budget's already been approved, but...
It's okay.
You used to have a paramedic and an ambulance at Primate Care and it's looking like you don't do that anymore?
We do. We do have a paramedic that's a substation out of Primate Care. That's like a fee-for-service, so they cover his salary and fee. And then we're guaranteed all the outbound emergency calls out of the Primate Care system. It's actually a really good program. It's a win-win for Primate Care and it's a win for us because we get all the transports out.
Right.
And when there's an emergency within that complex, they call the phone that he carries. So he has an immediate response. He calls dispatch and we dispatch a rescue immediately in that program.
Okay, well, that's good. I, the reason I was questioning it was because it shows Primate Care reimbursement and there was no projected dollar amount for reimbursement, so I thought that was an indication that we weren't doing it anymore.
No, no, we are, yes, yep.
Okay, well, that's good. Let's see. You have three people retiring or leaving for various reasons. Are you going to be able to replace them?
Yes. Yeah, we've already configured in their buyouts. It's going to be two captains and one lieutenant, I believe, will be retiring sometime next year, around June, July.
And then I was looking at the EMT slash Para EMT slash Basic. Obviously, Para would be a paramedic. We actually have that many paramedics working for EMS?
We do. We're up to 71 employees, including clerical. We're fully staffed. And all of the N91 side trucks, except for two crews, are double paramedic, which was our pre-COVID numbers. And all our basic EMTs are in paramedic school. And they've, a lot of the paramedics we have now, some of them that went through that program, started as an EMT with us and now are paramedics with us. And we've retained about 90% of those people.
That's actually very impressive when you consider nationwide, there was such a shortage of paramedics.
Right. We actually have three resumes sitting on our desk waiting for a call. It's crazy.
It is, that's incredible. That really, that truly is. I mean, all the, I mean, everybody's screaming for paramedics. That, that's, that's very impressive. And then the other thing, what is a community paramedic? I see you have four of those?
Yeah, mobile integrated health program. So in conjunction with Primate Care, we have grants through Bristol elders that we actually go and do wellness visits for elderly people through Bristol elders. We work with the Housing Authority and they go in and they, you know, check the apartment, make sure their pills are labeled, take their vital signs. So we have four people that actually go out and do those visits. We get reimbursed through the grant process on that. And we are also looking to expand that into actually doing medical visits for doctors' offices, like, almost like a visiting nurse, but it would be a paramedic.
That would be the community medicine category?
Yes. That program is still evolving. We're looking, hopefully, within a year or so to have actually doing medical visits for people and doing teleprop visits with the doctor. So the doctor would be on the laptop and we would actually
Yep.
do the visit for the doctor's office and get reimbursed for that.
With that, I yield, thank you.
There you go, Council. Council C one, Council Kadeem.
Thank you. So my first question, just on the user fee, so 1.6 million dollar increase, so what's driving that?
We actually currently have already made our fiscal budget for...
Could you please try to speak into the microphone?
Can you switch with me so you can talk to them?
I'm okay. So what happened is we've seen an increase in Medicare fees for the first time in probably 10 years, an increase in mass health fees for the first time in 10 years. So our revenues are right on target. Right now, we're currently already at just shy of $10 million. So we'll make almost what our projected budget is for next year.
Next year.
This year. Short, we'll be short.
Yeah, right.
But we will, and we're hoping that with the continue of the first right of return, we've actually almost made a 40% increase. That, that alone has been, it's about a million dollars. So if we increase that, the reimbursements for those returns home are less. But however, you know, numbers are money, right?
So then, salary wages, it's almost a 30% increase?
We had a $920,000 increase projected in our contract.
That was the CBA for the paramedics.
So...
So that was a 30% increase?
Well, we had, we actually added...
We added personnel.
We added the personnel that he, we put on for the second return truck. We, we took that out of our current operating budget this year, but next year we budgeted those salaries.
It's a big increase. So how are we, so, I mean, just that is 30%, so then we're only seeing a 10%, is that?
Correct.
Oh, is that, that's because you got the anticipated contract costs in '23, is that, is that the offset? Is that why?
So is it...
I'm just looking at FY '23 to '24.
So there was an $890,000 projected contract increase. And then we got 1.5% as a cost of living raise. And then we hired the four basic EMTs for the return transfer truck. Those are budgeted in that salary, in there. So it comes to about just a little million and over.
So it comes to 1.2 million?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. I've never seen anything like that, 1.2 million dollar increase. And that's sustainable?
It is. So just for some history, gosh, I think I was city administrator for like a week when the EMS union came in and it was Captain Silva and Lieutenant Leonardo really made an excellent case for the fact that the attrition in EMS was enormous. The operational tempo was huge. The pay was significantly behind any other EMS or even public safety in the area. And so in order to basically stop the hemorrhage of people, we put together a new wage scale. But then on top of that, they added personnel. I think, was there also a captain added?
Yes.
And then a deputy projected for the next fiscal year. So there's a second deputy that they project to add as well as a captain. The loss of a lieutenant spot, so there's a little bit of an offset there. But the wage scale was necessary because we just couldn't keep people. And there was no way we could keep up with the operational tempo they were working at. And where it was an enterprise fund, they were growing in spite of that. So we needed to facilitate the growth.
I get it, but it just, I mean, it flows down, right? So it's got an impact on other departments. I mean, we just saw the police department with a significant increase. I'm sure the Fire is going to be looking at the same thing and at some point, million dollar increases in salaries just, you know, for cost of living adjustments. And I understand we need to be competitive, it's just, I don't, and I've said this before, the revenues are just not keeping up, right? So unless we get new revenues, I just don't...
We, we actually, with all due respect, we certified $859,000 last year over cost.
Yeah, no, no, I recognize. I know you've got the revenue with the enterprise fund. I understand that. But it's, and I know we're not supposed to be doing parity bargaining, but when you get a 30% increase on your salaries, you know for a fact, police and Fire are coming. They're a binding arbitration. Doesn't matter what you do. You go to JLMC, they'll be looking at numbers, they're going to be saying, hey, listen, our EMS, even though they're generating revenue, is looking at a 30% increase in their, in their salaries. And I know, I get some of it is just new positions, so it's maybe not truly 30%, but it's, it's pretty close to it. I don't know.
I think they were that far behind. I think if you would see the wage scale prior to that new wage scale, you'd be shocked at where a five-year, 10-year paramedic was compared to pretty much any other place.
But just, I mean, just understand my logic. So we keep hearing about Diamond, Diamond's going to be a 5, 6 million dollar increase. We've got a 1.2 million dollar, and I get there's revenue associated with this, a 1.2 million dollar increase there and then we're going to see a 1.2, or I think it was a 2.2 increase, but that's a roll-up effect for police. We're going to get that with Fire. We've been talking about, you know, clerical staff, that's got to be addressed. I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a lot that's, that's going on that's just beyond Diamond. I know Diamond's a big piece, but I, I know we keep highlighting Diamond. I think we're, we're losing the fact that with negotiations, that, you know, some of this is, it's got to be a happy medium. And I, and I know we've got to get competitive, but we don't need to be at the top of the scale. We need to be somewhere, somewhere in the middle.
We are absolutely not at the top of the scale, but I, your point is well taken. I understand what you're saying. We are on par now, and I would say that the, the new wage scale for EMS brought them close to the other public safety. It was not a meteoric, you know, race past them, so now everyone else has to catch up. There are certainly some ranks that are making more, and again, not, we're not parity bargaining, but that are making more than an equivalent firefighter equivalent police officer. But this was actually in an effort to get them on par. And then with the, with the contract for police, I think police went ahead by a little bit again. The, the issue that we saw when we started bargaining with these units is that if you look at the past years, the, you know, the contracts that we had given, you know, 1-0-1 or 1.5, 1, 1.5, something like that. When you do a couple of those in a row, and I think you know this better than everybody, we were getting to the point where we were just, we were too far behind. We couldn't attract the best people or keep the people we had. And it was a problem. So we did, we did the best we could to, to try to make a correction that would allow us to attract and keep people because we felt like, you know, public safety was a priority of the administration. I think the council said something similar and we tried to act accordingly and then built our budget around it.
And please don't take away the fact, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job, especially generating revenue, right? I think that's, that's a great thing, especially being in enterprise fund and being able to, you know, maintain and sustain it on this end. It's just, to me, it's alarming on other fronts, but I get what you're saying.
I think there was a good point that I, I guess I forgot. So we added those four basic EMT positions.
Please try to speak into the microphone, it's really tough to hear.
We changed the organizational chart so that it mirrors the Fire Department, so there'll be another deputy chief position. So that's, so that's like, would be 10% of that 1 million plus the 800,000, which was the contract cost. So when you look at it, it's not really truly a 1.2 million dollar contract cost. It's the 800,000 anticipated cost. It's just that we added new positions that would cover that $400,000 difference, our new, our new positions that are being added into the budget.
And step increases as well.
And step increases. July 1st, they all get their step increases.
What's the Medicare match? What's...
Medicare match is the employee pays, we have to pay the city side of the Medicare match for the salaries.
Oh, I get it, because you're in enterprise funding.
Correct.
It's not going to have a payroll tax.
Correct.
All right. I yield, thank you.
There you go, very good point, but I think that's a point that he was trying to make. They were so underpaid in the past that when you look at what they're getting now, it brings it up to 30%, so it makes it seem like it's a lot, big disparity, which it really wasn't. They were underpaid significantly in the past. And now, look at their three applications, people want to keep working for them, so good job, keep up the good work. I commend you for what you do every single day. Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, there be no further questions. Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
We'll continue with the police department. Chief, could you come down, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Council C two?
Okay.
Chief, I'm sorry, before we begin, I know everyone here knows who you are, but there might be people at home watching for a first time.
Sure, that's okay. I'm Chief Paul Govan, Department of Police. I didn't quite get an opening, I appreciate it, but...
No, no, we'll give you an opening. You know what?
Sure, the budget that you have in front of you, obviously, there's an... Sure, the budget that you have in front of you, uh, obviously, there's an increase to the salary items with the budget contracts. But the rest of the operational budget is level funded. It's a hope that, uh, this year we can fill the one hundred sixty police officer positions. It's reflective of a downgrade in one captain position and one lieutenant position. But keep in mind this year, uh, we're also successful in implementing finally a one point five million dollar body worn camera system. We're also reaccredited, uh, by MPAC, and we are three quarters of the way through being, uh, reaccredited federally with a site visit due in July and hopefully an award in October. So if you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Chief, Counselor C two?
Yeah, I have a, um, a few questions. So on page two twenty-nine, which is the first page, um, um, overtime replacement staffing, overtime walking bee and overtime court time. I, um, to me, with the with the new contract, um, those numbers should go up, they shouldn't stay the same. Are we reducing the manpower or the number of hours? Why did those stay level funded with an increase in the rate?
Correct, I I I see your point. We're also looking at, over the last three years, I think we've hired over thirty new police officers, so their base rate is going to drop. Also, keep in mind, as we continue to get younger as a department, uh, it's not only, uh, the number of bodies that we have, uh, you have to start looking at it as the number of shifts each body works, so, you know, we're hoping that we're ordering in quite less, uh, this summer and hopefully leading to a decrease.
Okay. On the overtime specials and civic events, um, it's almost a sixty thousand dollar increase. Are we doing something more or again, or is it just applicable to the increase in salary?
Well, partially to the increase, but keep in mind, every year, every budget that we've had, when it when it's come to civic events, uh, we've annually gone over that line item, so this was just more of a historical look at that line item and placing an appropriate number there.
Can I comment on that?
Certainly.
So, um, and I think I've I've mentioned this before, um, in prior years, we hadn't ever really drilled down to the real cost of each of these events. And it's not for the purpose of of trying to discourage the events, but just to understand what it is they cost and and what the city should plan for, how we should anticipate the events, if they're, if it's appropriate to ask for some buy-in from the people holding the events. And the first step, of course, was to just to figure out what's the EMS cost, the fire cost, the police cost, the DPW cost. And so this reflects, uh, a better understanding of the real numbers, uh, that go along with the events that we know we're going to have every year.
Okay. On page two thirty-seven, I don't know if I'm not, if I'm thinking incorrectly or if it's a typo. I don't understand how a captain can have an annual salary less than a patrolman.
You're talking about the first one?
Correct, I see exactly what you what you're talking about, that's, uh, that's because we're anticipating a retirement in November.
Okay. All right, so this would just be the remainder of the year?
Correct.
Okay, I, I was like, this is impossible, that that just can't happen. On the very next page, page two thirty-eight, at the bottom of the list, ADJ realigned, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars, what is that?
Correct, that's a reflection of the current MOU, uh, for the superior officers, so that would be the adjustment, uh, in the value of that, uh, contract.
Okay. And then the, uh, let's see, the only other thing I have are on vacancies. How many, all right, I don't even know where to start, because you have you have you have fourteen vacancies at for patrolmen, two vacancies for body camera op- officers, why do we specifically have body camera officers?
So so if you recall, when we talked about body worn cameras systems, uh, they were talking about the requests that were going to come in, especially public record requests, and the time that it was going to take, and the labor that it was going to take to answer all the public records requests.
So those officers would fill that?
Correct.
That void, okay. You have one head clerk, three vacancies in signal operators, four environmental police. I guess the point of my story is it totals, uh, one point four million dollars. So my question is, how many of these positions actually do you anticipate filling? That would be my first question, so environmental police, for example, I don't think we've had four environmental police for ages.
Sure.
Right now, we have one out of five, we have four vacancies, I mean, do we really ever anticipate filling all four?
So my plan is to fill every position.
Okay.
I want to optimize public safety, and this is what the budget, uh, is what we're requesting. Currently, right now, the only thing that I can tell you that is not here is that we just hired, uh, within the last two weeks, two additional environmental police officers. We also have an additional three, was it four, uh, day one. On day two, we had three additional police officers in the academy currently right now, uh, due to come out of the academy in October. So those would eat up three of those additional patrol vacancies. Currently, we we have eighteen vacancies. If you can look, uh, through the paperwork, you'll see that if you count those three, uh, you're going to see, there was one additional retirement in Brian Cudero that happened just recently. We have ten va- I'm sorry, sixteen vacancies, you're correct, on page two forty-six. But if you go to the rare, uh, in the grant slash reimbursed areas, when you're talking about, we have one, uh, that's not filled in housing, two walk-in beats are not filled in, one officer not, uh, working in the, uh, disability commission area. So we are eighteen down at this point.
And you anticipate three, uh, hiring three signal operators?
Correct.
Okay. Because my issue isn't hiring people and paying them, my issue would be at one point four million dollars in vacancies, if you were only going to fill half of them, I would want to reduce the budget by seven hundred thousand, because if we're not going to use it, then it would be more prudent not to have it there.
Sure, and and Counselor, I I share your sentiment, um, our inability to hire, uh, to hire and to fill those vacancies has been something outside of our control. You're aware of the national situation with hiring police officers, so, um, at this point, a new hiring list will be generated July one, so we're hoping that, uh, we're going to get a little bit more of a robust, uh, list from, uh, this new civil service test.
Okay, thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C seven, Counselor Posel?
Thank you, good evening, chief, two questions, on page two twenty-nine, the proposed, um, for the SRO salaries, is that being covered by the schools now? Or is, what is the reason for the, in parentheses, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Because that's that's that will be reimbursed.
Okay, and that's part of the grant that goes back to page two forty-seven?
I believe that's coming right from the school, I'm not sure.
Which grant is that, Counselor?
I'm I'm asking, is it a grant that covers the those salaries?
No, it's a school expense, that's the that's the school, school expense.
Okay, good.
We build a school.
Okay, thank you, and then on page two thirty-seven, just for clarification, there's two two listed lieutenants with no names, are those vacancies, or that's just an error?
Those are two permanent vacancies at this point, when I say per, I mean permanent position vacancies. We have just, uh, within the the week, filled one of them with a provisional lieutenant, uh, Jeff Richard. Sergeant Jeff Richard will be filling that spot, um, very happy to make that move. But it is still technically a provisional spot, because there is no list for lieutenant at this time.
All right, thank you, chief, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor C six, Counselor Vice President.
So we have more police officers now than we had last year, or than we had when you came in before us?
I I'm.
There's more.
To be to be quite honest with you, Counselor, I believe last year when I was here, I think we were about that twenty-one year mark, uh, twenty-one vacancy mark. So we have slight improvement, but we have a new list, uh, coming up in July.
But we have an improvement, so there's more.
We have an improvement, because we have younger police officers, and we've had some older police officers retire. So with the replacements that have come in, uh, you have younger police officers who have less time as far as vacation time. They have less earned time, so then, uh, they don't have the same ability to take time off, so they work more shifts per year, so we're hoping that leads to a little bit of a savings.
So did we, do we have anybody, how much did you make last year with DEA, because we get forfeiture money from now?
Ooh, I couldn't tell you how much we make last year, last year, we did not have, uh, at some point, as you are well aware of that, we moved somebody out of DEA, correct.
Yeah, we pulled somebody off. But we made last year, because I checked, we made a hundred and fifty thousand from DEA that we got in. And DEA also helps the community if we have somebody there. I know there's issues with gangs in Far River, you know it, I know it, and the police department has done a wonderful job on it, I'm glad to see that there's now two people, uh, in the gang unit, but with that being said, if we had somebody at DEA, A, we'd get money, but B, they would help with some of these, because they, it's all within the county or within the area, just, you know, think about that. Because I think that that's, that would be helpful, if we can take any kind of money.
Sure, but just keep in mind.
And I know you would.
I understand the finance, I understand the finance side.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, as you look through, especially the salary side, and you start looking at the last pages of all our specialty units, and you start to see a vacancy here, vacancy here, vacancy here, that's exactly what we've done, we haven't, uh, we haven't done a wholesale, closed down any unit, but we've had to borrow from our motor vehicle unit, we've had to borrow one from housing, we've had to take one police officer from the schools. So you got to keep in mind that this is more about the priority of delivering, uh, direct face-to-face services to the people in the city. Now, keep in mind, if we do not have someone in the DEA, we don't get the money share, but that doesn't prevent us from working with them. I can tell you right now, we've actively worked cases with the DEA, even though we did not have somebody in the task force.
But if we don't have somebody in the task force, we don't have a right to the forfeiture money.
That's correct, correct, unless unless it's in Far River and we're working with them, then we do get a right to it.
And we're working with them, that's the key, we're working with them. I just think that that's really good, because sometimes you can do a big bust, you can get some good money with forfeiture. But, you know, you you just said something, um, housing. You know, it's amazing that I just learned, the housing authority pays for X amount of police officers to patrol housing.
Correct.
That hasn't gone up in ten years, yeah, in ten years, and this is not your fault, I'm just saying, in ten years, you've had contracts and police officers are getting paid more today than they did ten years ago, so if the housing authority is paying us, then maybe they should be paying us more, just a thought out there.
Correct, that's something that we have looked into and that has been identified, uh, and I think we had put them on notice earlier this year that with the contract increase that there was going to be an increase.
And when you have, um, calls in dispatch, somebody told me the other day, and I just want to ask you, somebody said, oh, there were twenty-one shot spotted calls in May. Well, I don't believe we had twenty-one shots fired, it could have been a car backfire or something like that. Are you aware of that, because sometimes there's rumors?
No, that that seems like an incredibly inflated number, but.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll look into it for you, and I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I've just, I'm like, I don't think that that's true, but, and let me tell you, I know we talked about, um, civic events, et cetera. But, I mean, you've grown up in Far River all your life. And to me, a lot of the civic events that we have at the different churches, I mean, St. Stan's, St. Michael's, St. Anthony of Padua, St. Anthony of the Desert, Santa Cristo, Espiro Santo, all of those have feast processions, those are tourism too, because people come from out of town to those events, just like the Great Feast of the Holy Ghost. And I know that for a long time, we supplied police to them, now we've given money to some tourism people, so maybe the tourism people should look at this and figure out what we can do. And then you and I spoke, and can they get a volunteer to do this, and if people could get some volunteers with maybe one officer? I don't know how that works, because then we're hearing you can't get volunteers, then we were talking about it before the meeting started, and my colleague, um, Counselor Posel said, I think if you have a volunteer, they need to do a Cory. But we don't know what it is, how can we save the police department money with having other people and maybe not having a number of officers there? But in speaking to some of the officers, there's a difference in a detail and what an officer would get paid as a detail versus what an officer gets paid as overtime. Is there a difference on that?
Correct.
Chief, there is?
Correct.
So if it's a detail, they get paid more?
Depends on how many years of service, your education level.
Oh, really?
So there's some fluctuation on ea- each individual's overtime rate.
Okay, I just wanted to throw some of those things out to you, because, for example, I know the gentleman who's trying to save St. Anne's Church, and he couldn't, he didn't have anything this year, because he couldn't get anybody, so he wasn't able to raise the money that he normally raises, and that's preservation of a building in our community, so.
And and to that point, Counselor, um, you know, because I did see that that gentleman was a little upset. But, you know, it also goes to looking at the bigger picture and how many, uh, men and women that we have working here. And if you're running a civic event, you should probably pull your permit at least thirty days in advance. And when you're not really meeting that deadline, you're you're sometime in the twenty-day, then you're you're really not even following the permitting process. So we also have, as you know, we try to work with City Hall to try to have blackout dates, this way people know that we're, uh, we're already stretched thin on certain days. This gentleman waited, uh, to the last minute to pull his permit, uh, not even within the thirty-day, uh, threshold.
Right.
And there were already two other events that were slated for that day that were already working, so it's unfortunate for him, but.
Maybe the event coordinator that the city just hired, maybe that could be a target person that are people, you know, somebody for them to connect with, and I don't think people really understand that, I just know that I've received a lot of calls from all these, um, events and and things like that. I agree that it's tough for the police department to afford it, it's tough for the city to continue to pay that and to afford it. I wish we could still have our auxiliary, and I know that they've been trying to do that, and that hasn't been great, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Sure, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I just want to re- reassure you that, uh, all these events, uh, especially the ones that are difficult for us to meet staffing levels for, to make sure that everyone's safe, we do our very best to to work with these groups and and, you know, we're we're very flexible. But sometimes we just don't have the bodies, and I commend Captain Fittaro, who's done a a wonderful job this year with handling. I think we're almost about fifty different, uh, processions and events this year already, and we're just hitting June.
Now, you mentioned, uh, before to my colleague in seat number two about Brian Cudero being out, but Brian's been out for a while. So did he have comp time, that that's why now he's getting out?
That's correct, that's correct, his official retirement date was, uh, several, uh, maybe a week ago or so, it was in May.
And is that the same thing with other officers, do you have other people that are out?
Correct.
In that we can't fill that spot until they formally retire?
That's correct.
So with this new contract, I heard that, um, the comp time has been allocated somewhat differently, so that we don't end up with that situation where somebody has, you know, a year or so on the books, I don't think.
Correct, when I go, I'll be out to do it, Counselor, you won't have me hanging on the books.
Well, chief, thank you, and and I'd be remiss to say that, um, maybe I shouldn't say this enough, but I I just think it's important to know that police officers, men and women, they don't like criminals, obviously, but they don't like a dirty cop. And I've got to commend the police department, because I think the majority of officers that we have are really good, caring individuals. And sometimes, one thing that hits the paper and it's a shadow on everybody else, and that's unfortunate, because I've worked with some great police officers within the department, so, uh, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for saying that, and I appreciate that, and I I, just to that sentiment, I I think all the good men and women in our department feel a little bit of that stress and the strain of, uh, having our reputation sullied, uh, by some members who don't, uh, comport to our policies, and they don't reflect our values, and the only thing, and I was at a neighborhood meeting last night, and I I spoke to a group there, Counselor C two was there, and, uh, I I told them, look, I signed a contract with the city, but more importantly, I have a social contract with each citizen in this community, and I can't tell you that I'm going to be able to control what a hundred and plus people, uh, do on a day-to-day basis. But what I can promise you is that when they don't comport to the rules, regulations, policy of the department, that we'll do our very best to terminate them.
And I think that that's something that needs to happen, you know, I even think that when anything happens, that the investigation should be done by somebody who's non-biased out of the area. Shouldn't be the police department, shouldn't be the district's attorney, too close, it should be somebody who's totally unbiased, that's my personal opinion. Because then you can't hear all this, all that was covered, this was covered, that, you don't hear that, no matter. No matter what you do, you're gonna hear something, I get it. But, but I did want to put a shout out, because I've worked with many police officers, male and female, and they have been phenomenal to work with, so kudos to the police department. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You yield councillor?
I yield.
Thank you councillor, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I just want to mention that you used the word majority of the police officers. I would tend to say that we all realize it's a supermajority, most police officers. There's just a few bad apples that ruin it for most of them. It's not just a majority of police officers, I think it's a supermajority doing outstanding job every single day, and have the right worth that, Dixon, care about this community. So I just want to make that clear. It's not just a majority, it's a super, supermajority. We're very fortunate to have the police department we have in place.
Policing today isn't what it was years ago. Officer talked to me, or my friends when we were young, you listened. Today, they have to really make sure they have on bulletproof vests, that they're protected, that they go home at night to their families, it's the respect of the community.
There's no doubt, the world's changing. And the closer you get to big cities, with a lot more population into it, the more crime and the more violence you see on a daily basis. With that being said, councillor seat four, councillor Liberty?
Thank you. I just have two questions. Is the harbor master currently under the police department?
Correct.
Moved? What is his current status?
So if you see, there's no salary in there, because obviously it was, it was difficult. The harbor master, I guess the mold of the harbor masters that we have been hiring in the past, they just didn't fit the post requirements. Post now requires a full-time academy. If you had already been here in the position, and you had a part-time academy, they offered a bridge academy, which would give you, I think it was eight hundred-plus hours, and that would give you almost the equivalent to what the regular police officers go through. If you missed that, or you don't have that, you now have to go through a full-time police academy. So if we're hiring, you know, a gentleman for low pay, and he's retired, I don't think they're gonna want to go to the academy and run around with twenty-five-year-olds.
So what are we doing now?
So we're, we're working with the administration, what we've done to fix it, we've assigned a full-time police officer in that position, he's doing a great job.
All right. And that, is that all they're doing? Or are they doing that in addition to their regular?
That was supposed to be three quarters of the year, but the duties and the paperwork at the end of the year, it just almost folds right into stop planning for the next year.
So that officer is strictly the harbor master?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know that. I think just a couple of years ago, our harbor master was paying, being paid like 2,500 dollars or something really small, and I'm going back a few harbor masters, and now he, in my opinion, did an incredible job, and I know the waterfront's being built up, and there's more things happening down there, so that was just one question I had. And then the other question I had is in regards to the contracts. I know that we've agreed on all contracts except the fire department. When they were all agreed to, Seth, did they take, did they go into effect immediately?
It kind of depends on the contract.
So I guess my question is, did the police, did the officers, the patrol go into effect immediately? Or is that not taking place until the new budget?
So almost all of the contracts that were under negotiation when I started were in arrears. So they, they all had retro. So they all, for better or worse, started immediately, because we were already in a con, we were in a year that the new contract would have covered. So they all got retro, and then there was always a wage scale or adjustment or COLA that would go into effect at the start of the next fiscal year. So that's what, what happened.
So that's across the board with all of them?
I think the only one that we were able to settle prior to its expiration was EMS, which started for the, for year one last fiscal year.
Okay. As long as they were all done uniformly, then.
Yes. And there's some adjustments. So I, as you probably recall, when we voted on the, or when we presented the patrol contract to the council, there was a question as to whether or not we would also adjust the superiors' contract, because the patrol contract compressed the rank differential between superiors so much, that a sergeant, in some circumstances, was making the same or less than a patrol officer, which you just can't do. When you're ordering somebody into harm's way, there should be a difference in, you know, pay, because there's certainly a difference in responsibility and authority. That, in principle, has been adjusted, and will be presented to the council, I think, at the next full meeting.
Okay. And then, has everybody that's settled their contracts, have they all received that ARPA pay? I think it was maybe 3,000, depending on what they were in?
So obviously, fire is the exception, because that's not complete. I don't know if patrol has received the ARPA pay yet, just because I know it takes a little bit of time to process the whole thing. Have they received it?
I believe they have.
Okay. It was very recent, okay. In that case, I can say that everyone has received the ARPA payment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, seat seven, councillor Pozo?
Yep. Just to piggyback on my colleague here about the processions, what have you, I know the chief that was asked of you last night, as far as the volunteers and the process that involves, I don't know if you want to allude just kind of quickly about that, kind of repeat what you said last night in the neighborhood meeting, as far as, you know, what's the immediate, how are we dealing with that? And then the question of if somebody's interested in being a volunteer for that, you know, to help out their church or their, their event, you know, what is, what is the process that Captain Fertaro's going through currently?
So if, if we're able to get any volunteers, she's doing a quick training session with them, and there really isn't much that we're asking of them, other than to man a particular post, make sure that no one's knocking down the police horses there, yellow wooden markers, and just if somebody does, just to call us. I mean, that's really what we're looking to, just to make sure that that intersection stays safe, so that nobody's running through, and then, you know, that they're coming into the middle. But she's done a great job, and the biggest thing is when we don't have enough police officers, she's been really trying to be flexible, working with their procession plans, maybe cutting down the route. Sometimes they, they want us to go with the procession to the church, wait for two hours outside the church, and then go backwards. So, you know, there's been a lot of flexibility in trying to work back and forth, and instead of just saying, no, we don't have the, the ability to do it, we're trying to work with people. I mean, obviously, we know this city, that our traditions, like processions, are important to us, they're important to the fabric of this community, and we certainly don't want to be the, the big bad wolf here and say no. So, you know, we're trying to work with people, and in the hopes of getting the job done.
And, and to my colleague, I know there is discussion about, for example, the churches getting the pastors together, and, and, you know, we know that these processions and these traditions happen every year, to start getting them together collectively to just, to figure out, you know, what it looks like of course through a year, this way they can properly plan for, for those processions. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, seat one, councillor Cadiz?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to clarify the statement, so when you leave, it's still gonna cost us, right? I know you'll just be out the door, but it still costs us.
One way or another, I'm sure.
Okay, just want to.
I'm not sure I've quite figured that out yet, but that's, that's the hope.
Just on a clarifying point for that one of my colleagues raised, DEA, DEA forfeiture money, is there restrictions on that money?
Yes, there, there are some restrictions on how to spend asset forfeiture proceeds.
It's not like it can go into the, for personnel or anything like that?
No, I mean, there, there is some array of things that we can do. I mean, we can buy some equipment, we can, you know, if we're doing an operation, we can pay for that, but we can't supplement our budget, I'm sorry, supplant the budget with those proceeds.
And then, can you just refresh my memory? I should, I should know this. For the two deputy positions, did we change ordinance to get, to contract? So they are, they are contractual?
Maybe it was about a year, it was probably about a year ago.
No, I, I thought that's what we did, I wasn't sure if that was finalized, so they're contractual?
They're contractual, correct.
All right. So we've, those two individual, so you and the two individuals have individual contracts?
No, not at this time. The, the two individuals are still on, I guess, the legacy contract, which is they follow the superior's contract. They haven't had the ability to negotiate yet.
So it's still negotiating?
It's, it's open. We just changed the ordinance, so I'm not sure, you know, when the next date will be to open negotiation with them.
Do we, is that the plan to?
I'm sorry?
Is that the plan, to negotiate with the individual contracts?
You know, we haven't talked about, I mean, that would be the plan ultimately, but we haven't talked about the timeline.
Okay. Because that's what the ordinance reads, right? We, so we changed it from, what was the ordinance originally?
So I think that it was.
It was like a set?
Yeah, it was set, and they, I believe, were they part of the superiors' union?
Basically, they just followed along with the superior officers' union, they got all their stipends and everything that they got, and they just, I believe it was like a sixteen, at some point, eighteen percent difference between the highest-paid captain and the deputy chief.
Okay. And then, so I only got a couple of questions, just the, looking on page two thirty-eight, so I was just comparing FTEs from this year to last year, so if you're supervisors, superior officers, you have fifty this year, it was fifty-one last year, is there a reason for the decrease?
We, we decreased one lieutenant as a part of the contract negotiation with the superior officers. There was one lieutenant position that I believe was supposed to be hired, I believe the council agreed to give it to, I think it was Chief Cardozo at the time, when Post first started, that was their recommendation. We have Detective Sergeant Moses Park, who's been working out of the professional standards union and doing a, you know, a great job, and just been able to handle quite a bit, really doing the job of two, two and a half people, he's just really a workhorse.
Okay.
But that lieutenant position was never filled? So we're not getting rid of a, of a position that was filled, it was just never filled, even after it was created?
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's absolutely accurate.
So we didn't lose a body, we just lost a position?
Correct.
Okay. And then, my other question, just, again, I, I go back and forth from this year's budget to, to last year's budget. So page two forty-nine, so the signal operators, so dispatch, you've got thirty-one. Is, has the dispatch always been under your budget? Just because when I look at last year's budget, and I was going through it, just, there's one portion there that just says this is information and purposes only, it's not included in the budget, but there's only seven dispatchers there? Some, we didn't add?
No, that's.
No, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
So if you go to page two fifty, there's the additional dispatchers that are paid out of the nine-one-one grant?
Okay.
And then on page two forty-nine, you see the, all the other dispatchers, and then you see the reduction, because EMS pays for five.
So, but it was always under the police department, right? So it probably just wasn't in the, in last year's details, is that?
I'd have to look, I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Yeah, because I, I just don't see it, but, but those are the same, same numbers, we haven't added?
Same numbers, we haven't added, but there are three separate pools of money.
Yep. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you councillor. Chief, I just want to make a couple of points. I know you keep talking about, you know, when you retire, when you're leaving, but I think we've had too many chiefs recently. We've had four chiefs in the last, what, eight years in the police department? I hope you stick around for a while, I hope just, we're kidding, because certainly, the last thing the city needs is another chief right away, because we just, we need some stability in that department, and you're doing a great job, I hope you can keep it up. Getting back to the harbor master, the, I noticed you got a thirty percent, thirty-six percent decrease in fuel. Usually, I mean, prices on the water especially, they keep going up every year, and it's historical data, what, when was the last time that historical data was implemented? Because you're going from 12,000 to 8,000 dollars in fuel.
Sure. So keep, so keep in mind, last year, all of our energy projections were a little bit over. Obviously, we were looking at where the current climate was, and how the prices were climbing, they seemed to level off. So based on what was used this year, the year before, and the current gas price, that's kind of where we made our projection.
Right. Another question, the, it's nice to have a harbor master, but he's not gonna get very far without a boat. How, what condition is that boat in, and how soon does it go in the water?